I'm in a call meeting, your order. This is a regular meeting conducted as a committee of the whole for Monday, August 8, 2016. Madam Clerk, would you please follow her role?
Yes. Mr. Brightwell.
Here.
Mr. Ficassi.
Here.
Ms. Morris.
Here.
Mr. Mandelbaum.
Here.
Ms. Seymour.
Absa.
Mr. Cruz is absent. Mr. Fraser.
Here.
You have five members present.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is to appoint Terry Fields as Park and Recreation Director, but it takes a Rule 10 in order to do this. Before we go any further, is she in the house?
Yes, she is.
Oh, there she is. Would you like to come to the microphone and tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. My name is Terry Fields. I'm currently the Chief of Recreation Programs and Services for the Oakland County Parks and Recreation Department. I serve on the management team under the Anne Stensel and Sue Wells. I've got close to 30 years of parks and recreation experience. I started my career as an intern at Wayne County Parks, and I did an internship in Fort Lauderdale. I had my first full-time job over at the City of Wyoming as Recreation Coordinator. I took care of pools, and we had a lot of golf, a lot of programs, a lot of special events, 5K races. I then moved after that over to West Bloomfield Parks and Recreation and served as their Recreation Superintendent. I had the Public Relations Department, our customer service, programs and events, and marketing. I was there for just under 10 years, and the Anne Stensel was reorganizing Oakland County Parks. It's its first year and a half there, and had asked me to consider coming on and work with the county, in which we provide services for 62 of those cities, villages, and townships. And that's where my current position is. So I welcome any questions if you have them.
Are there any questions from anyone on council? I know that you had an opportunity to meet Terry on a one-on-one basis about a week ago, and some of you took advantage of it, and others scheduled to go and all that. Are there any questions, comments?
As far as I'm concerned, Mike and I interviewed Terry the other day, and for a while, until Louis threw us out, right? We couldn't keep her that long.
Go ahead.
John came in too, so anyways, but yes, this is quite a fine lady who was bringing aboard. I am very impressed with her, and sure she's been doing a great job.
Mr. President, I may comment. We conducted, and that sounds like a national search, it was like advertised in the Michigan Mississauga Review publication online. It was picked up by ICMA, Michigan Parks Association, and national groups that picked up as well. We had candidates from across the country. We had a very strong pool of candidates. We had two that were exceptional, Ms. Fields was one of them. And I feel that her skill set and provided leadership that the city needs, recognizing the fiscal challenges, and in particular, the structural deficit situation that our Parks and Recreation Department has, and the need to further refine, develop greater public funding partnerships. During the interview process, involved within the interview process was myself, Chairman of the Parks and Recreation Commission, Ron Roberts, Ms. Siskin, was there Al Sevis from the DDA, our city planner, Terry Crowe, Lynn Roberts, and Chief Hawkins. And lots of good questions, and some very intense at times. A lot focused on budgets. Were we seeing Parks and Recreation needing to greater participation and volunteer organization, garnering greater corporate support? These were the types of questions asked. Ms. Fields clearly demonstrated through all of us in that group that she's had prior experience in that, volunteers to corporate support for Parks and Recreation events and such.
Okay. Now, just for clarification and to make sure that it gets into records, both internal and external candidates were interviewed.
That is correct.
Okay. So I want to make sure that everyone understands that both internal and external candidates were interviewed for this position. Mr. Brightwell.
I wanted to dedicate to that I met with Ms. Fields. In an interview, she answered all my questions and inquiries to my satisfaction. I could check on what the City of the Ministry has said. She's, I think, well qualified for the position. And I was moved that we had a Rule 10, if that's appropriate at this point.
If there's no more questions, yes. Mr. Cruz.
Yeah, I just have one question. When I looked through the packet, so is it standard for us to offer a 5% increase in salary after just six months of service? That was kind of troubling to me.
Now, that has been the standard practice, and I heard from Ms. Siskin, relative to longevity of that practice?
That's over 25 years that I know of. Yeah.
Does it make sense? I mean, I've never seen that before. Six months is not a lot of time to evaluate someone's performance.
That's standard in business, too. You hire someone at maybe 85, 90% of their job capacity, or their maximum, and then after six months, you do a six-month evaluation, and they get a bump at that point.
Okay. So that's standard in my work experience, you, six months is you get to keep your job, and you do work. And then we'll see you in a year or so. And I'm sorry, this is nothing against you personally at all. It was something new to me that I had not seen, so I was wondering, that was our practice. And if we think that is a good practice to continue.
Well, we can talk about that.
At this point in time, this is... Yeah, nothing to hold this up, I'm just saying, I was something I would like to look at further and more higher in the future.
Okay. Mr., oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to confirm what Fraser indicated, that actually, we kind of set the salary goal for the offer and back off of that 5% for the initial six months, so you don't get what we were going to offer you for the first six months, you get it when it gives you pass probation.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
I'm just going to support the Rule 10.
Okay. Mr. Mandelbaum.
Just a quick question. I too met with Terry and the press guy, what she had to offer and say. But going back to Mr. Cruz's comment, is it possible that, as a council, perhaps, I don't know if this has to be done in a closed session, could we get a copy of that performance evaluation after six months? Is that something that can be done, or is that not standard? Or are we going to get some...
Can I ask, are you asking to conduct the performance evaluation? The administrator would do it, you just want to see a copy of it?
Correct.
It's probably not been done?
To my knowledge, it's not been done, as we move forward on other evaluations. You know, perhaps we can develop a method to let you know that evaluations have been done, and perhaps some insight. It's a very, if an employee passes, no problem, but if an employee, if there are different corrective actions or something that have been outlined, I want to be very careful. So as a rule of, as we fine-tune employee performance evaluations across the board, I think it's appropriate that we develop some type of reporting back to council that has been done, that can include a list of who's been evaluated and that.
Okay. One of the things I think might fit into this, first of all, I think there are some rules about personnel records, that they aren't public, they aren't for everyone to see. Now, we're kind of a different group, but I think we ought to take that up at the same time as we talk about Lloyd's concern.
So, is there an actual evaluation in place, though?
There are evaluation forms in that. They're tied to some of the planning tools that were put together under about 10, 15 years ago. I think there's a lot of room for improvement, and we are working on those. For example, the evaluation is introducing, that on an annual basis, you're signing off acknowledging harassment and other policies that we have, discrimination policies, computer policies. We have multiple policies that are in place. The only touchstone on those for most of our employees is throughout the years. So as we sit down and evaluate, here's the goals for the department, here's your goals for your professional education. I think the evaluation falls short on identifying training goals of the employee. So there are some refinements that need to be made, and we are looking and working on those currently. But it's also a good time to reinforce, here's our policies. There have been a number of situations in the last couple of years that it would need to have supporting document, that the employee acknowledged that they were familiar with a policy, and they knew what to do in that case.
Any other comments? We have a motion by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Mr. Ficassi, that we find that immediately to act. Are you prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And now we need a motion to appoint Ms. Terry Fields as Park and Recreation Director.
So who? It's a park?
It's been moved by Mr. Cruz and supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that we appoint Terry Fields as Parks and Recreation Director. Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is Carrie. Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
I pray to you at the next meeting, of the meeting...
Ms. Field, her first day will be Monday, August 29th. That night, I would like to have her sworn in and introduced on camera to the public.
We need a swearing in. Oh, stay up there.
They're going to do that on the 29th.
Swearing in. How could she go to work without being sworn in as an employee?
Well, she won't be able to take any official action that day, if she's not officially sworn in. Because I think that typically, we do that at the regular meeting versus the...
We typically do, but to keep from cobbling up the workload and all, why don't we go ahead and swear in now? We can do another...
You could do it, yeah, right. You could do it the television version. They could book it, yeah. We were assuming you'd do it on camera, so we didn't bring it up.
Well, I don't have any problem doing it again on camera, but once she goes to sign the book, she can just pretend like she's ready.
She'll...
The only wrinkle in that whole thing is if someone is keeping records, they'll think that she was sworn in that night instead of tonight.
But the minutes state that she's not effective until 29th.
Right, so she'll be sworn in effective August 29th. I mean, your effective date is not changing, she's just taking the oath and swearing in now.
In case something has to be done that day.
Right. She's actually legit to take.
Yes.
It is a process. The statement, Mr. Chair, I would like to thank Mr. Block, he's got on the record for all the things that he did. There's a lot left.
Okay, you want to raise your right hand? You sound, you have sworn in that you all hold the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of this state, and the Southville City Charter while faithfully performing your duties as Parks and Recreation Director, in and for the City of Southville, County of Oakland, State of Michigan. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Ficassi has a statement that he'd like read into the record.
Yeah, I would like to, at this time, thank Mr. Block for being, he has done, taken over on a short notice and running your department a period of time, and did a good job, and very professional at what he did, and I just wanted to thank him for the job he did.
Okay. And I think that's, for me, that, you know, you've said what I would say, too. Okay? Item number two is a presentation and discussion by OHM, the Professional Team on Redevelopment of the Former Northland Mall Site.
Mr. Chairman, is there a reason we don't have, at least a copy of that to...
Of every...
Not the presentation necessarily, but the product?
Oh.
You know, I mean...
Yeah, I know.
You want to look at it and study it, so that you want to comment on it?
Yeah, I guess we can get copies of the printout of what...
Yes, and the strategy has been that we like your focus and attention on the presentation, and then we'll hand out a copy afterwards, if that's all right?
Okay.
And we will have those printed up and delivered to you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I know that, you know, we're supposed to be professional, but I like to study things so that you can comment on them, you know, after the presentation, rather than getting a presentation call, and you try to think of something that came up at the presentation. If you study it, you'll have a good, some of the things in your mind of what you're really looking at. Just my comment.
Okay. I'm sure that there will be adequate time to make, this won't be the last time we see So, Mr. Crowe, if you want to move on?
Sure. I'm just going to make a brief introduction of Jim Hough and his professional team, and they're going to take over the presentation. Mr. Al Sevis, the DDA Director, and myself will be available to answer any questions that you may have after the presentation. I know some of you have sat on the steering committee, and there has been some preliminary dialogue, but really, tonight is the first unveiling of what the professional team, working closely with city administration and the steering committee, have been working on for the last four to six months. It's been pretty intensive over the last three months. We do have a public unveiling scheduled for Tuesday, August 23rd, and we'll have a series of special invitation meetings to developers as a preview to that presentation. But before the cat gets out of the bag, one of the reasons we did not prepare the presentation in advance, besides that it was being worked on at the last minute, is that we wanted to make sure that the council was the first ones to view the presentation, and that your comments were taken and incorporated before it was released to the general public. And with all respect to Mr. Ficassi, I understand where he's coming from, but a decision was made that we would do the presentation first and then hand out after any revisions or corrections were made. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Jim. I'll ask Jim to introduce his professional team, and again, Mr. Sevis and myself will be available to answer any questions about process and moving forward. Thank you. I'll get you.
Ladies and gentlemen of council, thank you very much. Again, my name is Jim Hough, Vice President of OHM Advisors. I lead the planning and urban design teams. So we are very excited to be here tonight and share with you what we've been working diligently on for the last four months. So we're going to walk through a presentation number, unless you're going to participate in that presentation. I'm going to turn this over to my partner, Dominique Aaron, leads our planning efforts, and he's a lead planner on this project. We'll then walk through with Ken Danner, who's our marketing analyst, and I'll be back to you to share some ground calls with that area.
Is it possible for you to move the podium to the...
Sure. How's that?
A little bit more.
Do I need the mic for the recording?
Yeah. Thank you.
Sure. Good evening, members of council and members of the community. It's a pleasure to be here tonight with you to really tell you the story of what we've been up to as it relates to this project. I kind of like to think of this presentation as a storytelling exercise, because there's been a lot of work that has been put into this project in a very short amount of period of time. And so part of what we're going to do tonight is take you kind of along the journey that we've been on as your consultant team, to really think about how to rethink, reposition, and redevelop this important community landmark. When we set out on this project, and you asked us to begin this journey with you, there were a number of things that you asked us to look at. But I think in simple terms, our goal of this project was to determine the highest and best use for this site, while being mindful of who you are, your values, what's happening in the marketplace, but really looking, thinking about what is, how do we reposition this property to its highest and best use in the market, to really move it forward, and ultimately, put a strategy together for you to follow to implement that plan. A project like this takes a lot of mind power. And so, OHM is the prime consulting firm, but there's a lot of great thinkers also on the team. Some of them, or all of them are listed up here somewhere in the room that I want to introduce very quickly. Ken Danner is with us. Ken will be presenting on the market analysis piece. Laura Rodwin's in the back. Laura is heading up the public relations. And Ms. Edna Bell is with us as well, and has been helping with public relations component in addition to Laura. We also have Callison RTKL, which is a national architecture planning firm. Arcadis is doing the structural analysis as part of this. Introduce Ken. Tom Carter is a developer. He's developed a number of malls and lifestyle community centers around the country, and we have him on the team really to help bring perspective as it relates to what does it take to do a project like this. So in addition to having a professional consulting team, you have a consultant actually who's on the ground, doing this on a daily basis. Monker, one of your hometown firms here in Southville, worked on the branding. I introduce Edna and Laura. AKT, looking at the environmental piece to this. And then, so that collectively makes up the team. So as you can see, from what's underground to above ground, to creating a buzz, to doing the planning and architecture and design, you have a complete team of folks focused on this project. So part of this story I'm going to tell, I said we're going to go on a journey and I'm going to tell you the story, is listed here. This is really the agenda for tonight. I'm going to start and talk about the process. What have we been doing to build excitement, to build the components of this project, from engagement, public relations, and the branding piece of the project? Then I'm going to turn it over to Ken. Ken's going to talk about the work that he did, understanding the market potential as it relates to the Southfield market, the regional market, and specifically the site. And then Jim's going to finish talking about the plan. That's what everybody's waiting for, is kind of this reveal of where we're at. I think it's important to note that this is not the final presentation. We're not done delivering something to you. This is really an update to say, hey, we finally got to a really great milestone, where we come back to you, share with you what we've been doing, and kind of test the concept with you. Terry talked about the 23rd, when we're going to come back to the community and reveal it and test it some more, and then you'll see this again at the very end. One of the things I would ask, because this is a presentation with a lot packed into a short amount of time, is if you have a question, you ask it, that's fine, but we'd like to try to get through all the material and have questions all the way, and bring the team up at that point. So in addition to the overarching goal, there are a number of things that we were asked to look at, both from Al, from Terry, from the community at large. And I think it's really to establish a local and regional destination icon. That's what this place was over time, it's seen a lot of decline. But how do we really make it great again, make it both a local and a regional destination for Southeast Michigan? The other key ingredient here, and we've asked the public a lot about this, some of you at the table have given us short thoughts, is this is a large site, this is 125 acres. So we've looked at a lot of different malls and mixed-use developments, some of which you can pack two into this site, it's okay. And so there's one thing that we really wanted to be mindful of, is when we have that much space, what type of public space do we want to really create something for the community to walk through and to enjoy? And as you connect those public spaces into the neighborhood adjoining, making sure there's strong pedestrian direction. We also are really focused on flexibility, in terms of what can the market support, not only today, but tomorrow, we all know the market changes. So we were asked to create a plan that is highly flexible and can respond to those conditions. Of course, the name, we're not talking about innovative and sustainable development, ideas, solutions, we're not doing your job. So we're pushing the envelope on trying to come up with solutions that we think are innovative and sustainable. And then always thinking about the adaptive reuse of any particular feature, site feature, or building, whatever it is, as part of the project. So this schedule was the original schedule we set out on. So we started in April, we really ramped up in May, May, June, July, and so we've done a lot in the last three months, and here we are in month four-ish of the project, because we kind of ramped up, took us a while to ramp up in April. But it is important to note is that we've done a lot in those three months. This is a large project, we talked about 60 years and 60 days when we were in month two, now we're 60 years and 90 days, and then we'll be at 120. And here we are, kind of near the end of the project, with this council presentation, and then that public presentation again on the 23rd. So what are we even up to? Here are some of the major work steps we've completed. A brand campaign, we've done a site analysis of the site, we facilitated stakeholder meetings, which we'll talk about in a minute. We've done the market analysis, we've had one public meeting, a design charrette, and then a lot of public relations along the way. So you can see there's been a lot packed into those three months and three and a half months. One of the first things we did as part of this, and you see the Imagine the Possibilities slide when we started, is how do we put a brand campaign around this movement? So ultimately, as we continue to develop the plan and finish, we want to launch it into the community, what is it that we're sharing? What is it that people are buying into? What is the essence of this project? So we worked with Monker to put together a brand strategy. That includes everything from brand messaging, to the public realm, to the physical representation of what's happening. And we came up with the brand campaign of Imagine the Possibilities in the heart of it all. And so the idea is that we start to create a movement around the redevelopment of the site, and you can see the application of how that would be done, either online, existing art that's on the site, the back of the buses. We've talked a lot about the water tower kind of being this beacon feature that we want to brand, whether it's at bus stops, wrapping the construction fence. These are all things that were developed over the last couple of months, that we wanted them put into practice, to create the buzz, to create interest that this is happening, something is coming. And then also applying that to community engagement. So this is something that we would like to be working on between now and the 23rd, to allow people to kind of start to wear the brand within the community, so that the whole community feels part of this, they're excited about it, they feel good that something new is happening at the site. You can see the bumper stickers there. And then we've also talked about, how do we get people to the site between now and the project's developed, which will take a number of years, this is 125 acres. So we've talked about drive and movie nights as part of this, art installations, food trucks. There's a lot of things we can be doing on the site in the meantime, to get people back to Norfolk. And then also ongoing support. So one of the things we keep talking about is having people's ideas and visions wrapped on the construction fence, apps on the phone to provide inputs, so a lot of different things we can be doing around the brand campaign. One of the other things we've been doing is really starting to create the buzz. So as we work up towards this brand campaign and getting it out, word out, we've been also doing our public relations. Today, it's really been focusing on letting everybody know that this is happening, the process is going on, there's a team working on this, and that's one of the things Lauren and Edna have been working on. We've had 14 news stories, I think that's already out of date since I last reported it, in print and on TV. Many of those are all listed on our project website, which I'll share with you in a minute. But the idea is, is that we want people to know this is happening, there's a lot of work going into this project, and ultimately, share, soliciting their ideas to the project website, and sharing back to them what's happening, what are the concepts being developed. As part of the public process, again, we've been doing a lot of work in a short amount of time. One of the key things that we did was, we met with a number of stakeholders, and the stakeholders are those who have a strong vested interest or ability to shape the future of the site. So ultimately, as a community, you're all stakeholders, right? You all live here, you have a stake in the community. These are stakeholders that are large property owners adjoining the site, that we wanted to talk to about their needs, as well as some of the larger employers that may be impacted by this site. We also had a design charrette, we held a public meeting at the Family Fun and Safety Night, and then we had online input as well. As we went through the public process, one of the key things we were focused on was the public realm. This is a large, complicated project, a lot of which is being driven by the market, the mix of uses, the... the mix of uses, the types of usage. We want something that can respond to the market. Public really been engaged on, what does this feel like? What's my experience when I get there? Where am I going when I'm not inside the building? What does that look like? So that's what we focus on with the public. So not necessarily driving the solution and the mix of all the different types of uses. We've been mindful of what they have said, but ultimately Ken and Art and Tom have been saying to us, this is the right mix of uses. This is what we think that the market can respond to. Interestingly enough, for the most part, I think that's aligned up with what we've heard from the public. With the stakeholders, we've had more than 30 stakeholders participate, representing roughly 20 different groups. And they, they gave us a number of key points to consider. Some of those are listed here. But as I talk, you're going to see a common theme. As you look at things like walkable, clean, safe, respect for the history, mixed use, so a lot of what that says to us is community. So we understand that we need to respond to the market and we need to make something that's developed a whole, but at the same time, always thinking about what are these attributes that are really going to make this a great community place? So these are, these are coming from your stakeholders even that were joining. And then they also gave us some insight on the user. So office, restaurants, eateries, craft beverages, fitness facility. You know, this, the idea is the eateries and the craft beverages is very specific, but the one thing that we heard from them was keep it local. You don't want a whole lot of franchise. We have some of that, I can drive there, but let's bring something in a flavor of Southfield that's going to make this place unique and special. And then on that, on the green space, public space, some things that were mentioned that were common themes. So a lot went into this. These are just the common themes. We also had one public meeting. We had over 100 different participants at this meeting. We were going to come have it in a room like this, and then we thought, why wouldn't we do that when we already have tons of people coming to the Family Fun and Safety Night? So we actually took this out to the street and we gained public input at this special event. So that was really fun. Edna was there helping us talk to everybody, this one was Laura. And we just asked people, number one, what is your dream? What do you really want to see here? And also, what does that public space look like? So these dots that they're voting on are the different types of amenities they would like to see. And then here's the kind of the dream catcher of all the ideas that they put up. So we made a kind of a word cloud of all those ideas. And the one question was, what do you imagine in the heart of it all? So again, think about those words I shared with you from the stakeholders. These are coming from the 100-plus folks at that event who said, who contributed well. Again, walkable, clean, intergenerational, something for everybody, public art was mentioned a lot, dining. These are quality of life amenities. So again, I keep coming back to that market perspective, right? Ken, our team, really focused on how can we make a flexible plan that responds to the market? This community is telling us about quality of life amenities they would like to see integrated as well. And that's really what's informing our, our design, what Jim is going to talk about. So when we asked them to score all of those things, here's how that all scored out. Water feature and children areas, number one. What that says to me as a planner, you have something for families. You don't see too many adults going to the splash pad, although I do enjoy that with my kids. But something for family, some destination, seems like this community very hungry for that. Family-oriented destination. And then you can see how the rest of those things scored out as well. So I talked about our, the website for the project to date. We've had over 1,000 visitors to the website and growing. In fact, 250 of those were last week. This is ImagineNorthland.com. It's been in all the public relations information that's been going out. So you have about the project, latest news, so all the coverage, that you can get involved and share your ideas. After this presentation, we'll start to put some of this up for comment and for viewing from the public as well. And you, you can see things on here like, what is your vision for Northland? What type of uses would you like to see? We have a seven-question survey on here that we're asking the community to take as well. So really trying to allow participation from every front, whether you're on your couch at home because you're too, too busy like me and you got to get home and feed the kids, or you want to come to a public meeting. We're really trying to make participation accessible. Those seven questions really build on the input gained from the public meeting. So we're asking very similar questions to build a database of similar ideas and comments. One of the other things we did, again, this is baking the cake, right? So our job for the first two, three months was to get all of our ingredients and put them on the table because we're going to have a meal. And so we're just continuing to fact-fide and understand the context of this project, this site, and this community. We had a design charrette. The design charrette was really geared towards staff and the different departments to come in, look at the drawings, look at the things we've uncovered, and tell us what they think is a focus part of this. Because today, we had public meeting, we had stakeholders, we really didn't talk to staff. So we had about 30 staff. The administration was here, local leaders participate. There's Eric from RTKL doing, doing a good job doing his thing. And we asked another question, series of questions about quality, character, and experience. And this was the input, some of the dot exercises that group did as well. Starting to see a common theme here. Need for additional programmable public space, insight on public space elements, and then public safety needs to be designed into, I know it dropped off there, needs to be designed into this project. That doesn't mean we put a police station in the middle of it, although that could be a component. It means that the way we organize things, the way you can see the street, where the public spaces are located, it creates a sense of security and a sense of safety within the design. So that's something we were mindful of. So that's everything we've been up to on the front end. And I know I packed a lot into a short amount of time, but we still have a lot to cover as it relates to this process, how we've reached out to community, what the public relations has been, and then how we've engaged the leadership here as well. So again, those are some of the ingredients on the table as we continue to think about this entree. And Ken's going to talk about another key ingredient to the redevelopment of the site, which is the market.
Thank you. It is a pleasure to be here. The movie field of dreams, build it and they will come. That's kept me busy for the last 54 years. Our world has been turned upside down in the last 10 or 15 years. It's changed your world, it's going to change both of our worlds for the next 15 or 20 years. In these changing times, we can no longer extrapolate from the past to project from the future. For 40 years, that was good goods. We could, we can look at the last 10 years and say, that's going to be pretty much what we're going to see in the next 10 years. Those things are changing. Greatest challenge is impacting what we're looking at tonight for this project, an aging A growth disparity between age groups. Increased competition by employers for a declining number of college graduates, retailers for a declining percentage of affluent households, colleges for a declining number of high school graduates. That's all impacting what we're going to be talking about tonight. In Southfield, between 2010 and 2020, population will increase, depending on who you talk to on this one, anywhere from 1% to 4%. Population over age 65 will increase 42%. Households over 65 with incomes over $75,000 will increase 110%. Households under age 45 will decrease 1%. Households under age 45 with incomes over $75,000 will increase 74%. What does that mean? What does that mean to us and why we're here tonight and why we're looking at this? If you look at, if you look at the population and the households in Southfield, and you consider that those households under, and we're talking about people who are in a move-up housing market, so they're $75,000 in income. If you look at the households under age 45, they are the buyers, they're consumers of single-family homes. They're looking, they're looking at, at shopping, they're looking at employment, they're looking at schools, they're making a choice as to where they're going to be for the next 20 years. 45 to 65 is a status quo. People move around a little bit. People don't move much between those, those ages of 45 to 64. 65 and over are sellers. These are people who are looking for a change in lifestyle. These are people who, prior to 2008, were buying empty nester condominiums. Today, they're moving into ranch apartments, they're looking into elevated homes, they're looking to get away from the snow, the leaves, the lawns, the gutters, looking to make that lifestyle change. But these are the people who've lived with us for years. This is part of the culture of each of our communities. If we look at that ratio in Southfield, in the year 2000, there were 1.7 households in the buying category for every household in the selling category. Today, 2015, that 1.7 to 1 is 0.8 to 1. We have lost half of the ratio of buyers to sellers. What does that mean? If you have, if you have more sellers than buyers, you have a difficult time maintaining, have a difficult time maintaining values in single-family homes. Also means that we have to find a way to bring people into the market, find what people are looking for today to come into the market and become the next wave of home buyers. That's, that's the project that we're talking about. And that's a purpose. That's one of the main strategies of getting to this point of supporting the underlying value of single-family homes. If you look at a continuum of housing, you know, we've all lived someplace that we don't ever want to go back to. We've all lived in an apartment that we'd rather not tell anyone we lived there, but we did. And then we got a raise, maybe we got married, had a double income, maybe we picked up a roommate, and we moved up in apartments. And we went through three or four levels of apartments and we became a first-time home buyer. Today, by the way, people are skipping that first-time home and they're, and they're going to a higher-priced apartment. They're moving up, they're living within the rental community as opposed to for sale community. Then once they get into this, this upward mobility, they'll move two or three times within the single-family market. Ultimately, we're looking at senior lifestyle housing, which is an empty nester type of product. Then we get into assisted living. Ultimately, we get into the very, very, very high-density residential, which is the cemetery, which is. So to attract those people into the market that are going to become our next wave of home buyers, we do it with lifestyle. We're looking at, at all of the things that Aaron was talking about earlier, that not only, not only employees, not only potential residents, employers are looking for the same thing. You know, what we're talking about, and we're going to the office market in a few minutes, this is not necessarily going to be, we have a very good office demand for this product, but it's not necessarily the big institutional. It is more like the architectural firm, the market research term, the, the ad agencies. Looking for creative space, looking for an integrated, vibrant types of spaces. Not necessarily interested in, it's three feet from my desk to your desk, and I need a computer here and a computer there. It's, I'm going to be there for 10 hours a day, six days a week, and I want to have fun on there, and I want to feel good about where I'm at. And that's the kind of space we're looking at, not only for residents, but for employers as well. Things that we looked at within the context of this site, residential, office, retail, lodging, assisted living, and daycare. And I'll, I'll get into a little bit of those and need to be mindful of the time. We have some analytical tools that we use. The most important one is number two, a 100% database. We can't go to the computer and gather the information we need to make a recommendation for the development of this site. There is no database available for all of those categories we talked about. Our staff had to go to every property that we were targeting. We looked at every apartment, every condominium, we looked at every assisted living, we were in every office building, we interviewed people in all of those places. We probably conducted well over 350 interviews to get to the point where we could make a recommendation for this site. The effective market area, well, I've got one kind of scribed here. Our definition of effective market area is the smallest geographic area that will contribute 65 to 70% of support for a project. The EMA is different for everything we're looking at. The EMA is going to be different for retail than it is for assisted living or apartments or condominiums. So we'll do an analysis of each of that geography that is controlled by that specific land use. We surveyed 14,000 apartments in the, in the effective market area, very low vacancy rate, relatively high rents. What isn't shown here is low vacancy, high rents, old product, functionally obsolete. That's an opportunity for us to provide something for people to step up to. We made a recommendation. This is not really a recommendation. Contradicted myself already. What we have here is a, is a menu. This particular menu is for 586 apartment units that can be supported by this market on this site. And we may end up with 400, the geometry of the site may say it's going to be 475. This is a menu that we can choose from to help achieve the goals that Aaron outlined in, in his presentation. So if, if we look at student housing, what we look at, at standalone mid-rise for seniors, those are things that may help get us to this branding that Aaron has discussed. So we can pick from this menu, help get us to the goal that we have. One of the tools that we use, and I'll spend a little time with apartments, but it applies to everything that we're doing, is, is a trend line analysis to help establish rents and step up support to help establish depth of support. Trend line basically says, and you can see the line, that we look at every amenity and every feature of every apartment community in the market area, and we assign an index number to that. And put it in range here, most of the product here ranges from a 12 or 14 up to a 26 or a 28 on our scale. But when you scatter plot all of those properties, we can then say, hey, if I give somebody a product with an index of 30, I can get $1,700 a month. If people walk into that product and look at it, they will say, hey, this is, this is worth it. This is worth $1,700. I'd like to live here. Now at this point, I don't care whether they can afford it or not. I want them to look at that product and say, I like this. This is, this is a nice place to live and it's a good value. Maybe I can't afford it. The step-up support comes from the number of people already in the market who are paying rent from which they can step up to our target rent. So at $1,700 a month, you can see we've got a lot of product in here within that 10 to 15% step-up range. So that gives us the quantity. So we have, we have the value side of the equation and we have the quantity side of the equation. From that, we pull the different product types because we can also look at this and say, do we have voids in the market? Do we have a void for townhouses? Do we have a void for senior-specific product? Do we have a void for students? We can look at those voids, we can look at those price points, we can say then, here's the residential component of that menu. Office space, 5.2 million square feet of office space, 20% vacancy rate. It's kind of a high vacancy rate. I like to see a vacancy rate closer to 15%. For our purposes, I'm not interested as much in the vacancy rate as I am in the occupancy rate. What that means is we have 4.2 million square feet of occupied space. An average lease term of four years, we have a million square feet of office space coming up for renewal every single year for us to get 200,000 square feet over a five- to six-year period of time. That's a very, very good ratio. The reason I'm interested in the occupancy rate rather than the vacancy rate is because we're offering a product that doesn't exist in the marketplace. All of our product, most of our product at least, is institutional space. If I've got a 6,000-square-foot space or even a 10,000-square-foot space, I may not get the best solution for my purposes out of an institutional office building. Certainly, if I'm a smaller person, I've got 3,000 or 4,000 square feet, I'm going to be behind the elevator, behind the restrooms with three windows for 14 employees. This product that Aaron is defining is a product that's going to be responsive to the, to the needs of those people. It's a different type of product. So I'm more interested in the 4 million square feet of occupied space than I have and the 1 million square feet of vacant space. If it's going to be vacant, it doesn't matter. I can get my meat out of that 4 million square feet. And the same is true here. You see that the bars represent the rent ranges. And, and basically, we have that $14 to $16 rent is a huge opportunity for stepping people up to a $17 to $20 rent. A space like we're looking at today, we have a lot of people and we talked to a lot of tenants, we've looked at a lot of tenants in, in this market. There are a lot of people who may be in 7,000 square feet, only need five, but the space that they had available to them for whatever reason is seven. They can move their rent up 15%, go into less space and save money and, and be in a more appropriate space for the type of business that we're talking about. Recommendations for our office, 70,000 square feet in a, in a office campus environment, 40,000 square feet in integrated commercial space, that the space is over, over storefronts, integrated into mixed-use property. integrated into mixed-use property. And then on the perimeter, still in, in a campus environment, would be an additional 90,000 square feet. So, we have a total of 200,000 square feet over a six-year period of time. Keeping in mind, we're even 200,000 feet out of renewals at the rate of a million square feet a year. It's a very, very low ratio, it's a very healthy ratio. Retail, you know, there was over a million square feet in space, this is not going to be the retail center. But we need enough retail to give validity to an integrated use and development that can be branded as an, as an active property that people are going to want to come to for a variety of reasons, whether it be some shopping, re-entertainment, a variety of things that could go on. But, we need enough space to make sure that it validates this whole integrated use concept. Interestingly, retail space today, in almost every center we go into, 40% to 50% of that space is not retailers. It's service, it's medical, it's dentists, it's legal, it's real estate. A variety of commercial, not retail, users who want the kind of space that we're talking about here. And, and in this case, you know, it adds to the streetscape, it gets a lot of people into the property during the day as, as part of the workforce, but added to that 200,000 square feet of office, you have employment in an additional 40,000 square feet of retail space, it's going to have more people in it than your traditional retail. Also, some big box sites, room for an anchor, some things we can do with that because the site is, is so large and it becomes a, a planning issue. Lodging, we see at least one hotel, we can make a case of probably two or three, there's a lot of hotels serving the area, a lot of them are older, functionally obsolete, I'm stunned at the occupancy and the rates that they're getting, and it's simply because, and, and by the way, there's a lot of flags missing from this market. So, when I look at, at the growth of the room support in this market over the last 10 years, the growth in the room rates, the growth in the occupancy rate, and no growth in the number of rooms to speak of, it gives us a, a great opportunity to do at least one, maybe two hotels. Additional recommendations, opportunities, we have a major deficit in assisted living and memory care beds in this market, major deficit. We set 100 beds, it could be 150, it could be one today and another one five years from now, it could be one that specializes only in memory care. We have 400 bed deficit in memory care beds in this market. Those are people who are leaving the market in order to get the services they need. Daycare center, we have a lot of daycare centers, some are functionally obsolete. Because of the location, proximity to all the things that are being planned for the site, I think we still have room for another daycare center. Medically-assisted health, wellness, fitness, Aaron talked about the folks and their desire for additional fitness facilities. And, one, one other thing I would add, of all the numbers you will see in our report, my phone number is in there. To your point, if you have any questions, call me.
Thank you, Ken. So, you can see, as Aaron talked about in that, and Ken unloaded a lot of information in a very quick period of time, so I'm sure you'll be some questions, we'll bring Ken back after the presentation to kind of answer any questions. But, as Aaron indicated, you can see that we are baking a cake here. And so, we've shared with you all the various ingredients that go into it. Now, when we start to then put it in and bake the cake and what the cake's going to look at, now you have a chance to actually start to taste and see what it could be. When we start looking at a plan, I want to make sure that you understand, when we deal with a large track of land, this property will be developed out over a length of period of time, given the size. So, when we start looking at a plan, we really start trying to identify a couple of different things. What is the organizing element that you organize a piece of property to when we start talking about roadways, open spaces, other things that we control that, that will live past the plan as well as build some flexibility in, and then create and share a vision. So, what you're going to see tonight isn't a plan, what you're going to see tonight is an organizing direction around how we develop this property up, and you're going to see a vision of what this thing could look at, look like all the way through. That's important because, again, you know this will evolve and change over time. So, think of this as a vision of really what could be. Now, so, when, when Ken went over all his information, we start to then break that down and simply look at, okay, how do we fit this basket of information and start to look at how we organize it on the site. And so, this pie chart simply shows you that basket of information that can't change. I think the important takeaway out of this is that residential will drive this property, okay? When we see the successful mixed-use projects that are done around the country, the one thing we're seeing is those are driven by residential, a vibrant place. Today, people are looking at different type of living opportunities, they want to live in a vibrant residential area where they can walk to all their amenities, not only to the job, to a coffee shop, to a park. So, that's what you're going to see based on this, is that residential will be the driver that really drives this thing in a way. Okay? So, we start from a planning team to start to understand, what do we have to work with now from a physical standpoint, okay, working through the property. So, first thing we start with is understanding the history and heritage. This property is so special, the history is so great on this property. Again, I told this story, I think, when you hired us, but when I went back to our office, you know, I had a loan here and said, we adapt this, I can't drop, I can't believe how many people in that office in La Bona came up to me and said, wow, I can't believe this. First, I remember as a kid going here, this was my favorite place to go, there's so many people, not only Southfield, there's so many people in the complete Detroit metropolitan area that have a special feeling for this property. So, we have to carry that history through in the development of the plan. We also understand the influences around the property, so we look contextually, these uses around us will also be neighbors and will participate in this property. So, it's very important that we look at from everything, from understanding the college, open community college, its impact on the hospital, certainly Providence Hospital, a major player, understanding that, okay? The neighborhoods along Greenfield, the neighborhoods along Eight Mile, the various office buildings adjacent, the old hotel site, all of these various surrounding uses, this property all have a tie to this property, and so we need to reflect that in, in the overall development of the plan. Linkages are very important. So, when we start talking through this, the linkages will drive a lot, the linkages, both pedestrian and vehicular, from hospital, pedestrian linkages to the college, to the surrounding areas, these are something that, another ingredient that drops into the baking of this cake. Okay? One of the things we looked at very hard was, after requests when we walked through here, is let's look at the ability to potentially adapt the look we use in the structures out here. So, our architects, our structural engineers crawled through and looked at everything out here, and from the tunnels, from all the buildings, from existing all, the areas that we identified and got the most excited about really come out of two major, okay, J.L. Hudson's original building. We believe that is a special building, special history to that, it's also a unique building in the marketplace. From a structural standpoint and from an architectural standpoint, we believe it has reuse potential, it warrants keeping it as an adaptive use. As funny as it seems, the other building we got really excited with was the team, was the power plant. So, if you take off some of the fringe pieces around the power plant, if you go into that base power plant, and we'll show you some pictures, again, that's the Hudson's building, unique architecture, neat framework, we believe that this building can be the centerpiece of the redevelopment of this property. Now, this is the power plant. Can you imagine as we clear off these edges and we have this big open space with all these pipes and everything around here? We painted these pipes vibrant colors and we did a restaurant bar down in the lower level of this area. We think it's really cool, our architects got really excited about it, we think there's a lot of market potential, it's a very unique building, so it's another one we are going to walk through. Now, there's a lot of appendages to that building that need to be taken down, cleaned up and all that, but we think that core power plant building has a great potential in the marketplace for use. Okay? So, we identified those and crawled through those. Then, when it comes to the tunnels, we really looked very hard at, okay, what can we do? How do we look at these tunnels? And the main reason isn't really that we want to necessarily put uses down in those tunnels, if there's a use in those tunnels, it's a very special use that comes out, it's really the cost of tearing those tunnels out, filling those tunnels. It's an incredible amount of money from a structural standpoint, from a cost standpoint. So, it warranted the design team to take a careful study of, can we reuse these things? And we looked at everything saying, okay, what's the option? If we use the tunnels as underground parking or underground spaces that the building will feed into versus filling it? And you can see little studies at that point saying, how do you locate buildings around, saving some of these tunnels and infering information if you haven't seen it. This dotted line over here simply starts to represent that area of underground tunnels. We also then looked at, what if we end up saving and daylighting a core of that? So, if you can imagine building around the perimeter and then taking area in the middle and not filling it, and so we have a sunken area, a sunken garden, something to that standpoint. Again, just looking at what are the possibilities? Okay? We also looked at, what if we tear the buildings down, tear the tunnels out, but don't fill the lower level? So, we don't bring in all that fill and end up with a lower-level park. So, we build around it and we take the lower level, we turn it to green, we look like the lower park. So, these are all studies we went through to start to look at how those things develop as well. Again, a study, can you do some variety of that? You save some of them underneath the buildings as lower space, that could be parking or something else, you fill some of it and you do some kind of transition space. Again, the prime example of that is if you look at the Hudson's building, as you got the lower level, I'll talk about First and Highway, that's kind of opened up in there. So, again, studying all these possibilities to understand. We then kind of went back as we're baking this cake, and it was really important to go back to the same principles that Aaron talked about earlier that drive everything and start to kind of say, okay, how do those principles now abide and, and work toward the actual physical development of the space? Okay? We know that strong pedestrian and vehicular ties that integrate the fabric of the community, all those buildings and other uses that I showed you around the neighborhoods, those things need to be connected. This is a central piece, so looking at that is a strong dynamic. Creating a dynamic public space. We believe that this is, belongs to the people and we need to bring it back to the people in a major public park, open space, creates an anchor to this thing is important enough. A fair, fair system, not only in, from pedestrian and from a vehicular standpoint, that starts to tie a lot of these districts together. We do know that whatever we plan, and Ken, Ken does a great market study, he'll be the first to tell you, we don't know what's going to happen 10 years from now. So, we need to build flexibility into this plan to adjust to those changes in the marketplace. Okay? Again, complimenting, as we talked about, the surrounding land uses and the airhood and integrating those into those, coming up with innovative solutions, stormwater, some other things going through, and rather, we believe that we can find ways to utilize some of the characters of the site without absolutely clearing it and leveling it flat. Not only do we save a lot of money, we create interest in the property. Okay? So, and of course, going back again, the importance of adaptive use. So, as we start to lay those principles out on the piece of property, we came to understanding that we need to develop a series of blocks. And those blocks are established through a primary framework of roadways. So, you can start to see how important these connections are, the Providence, up to College, the surrounding areas, to the main roadways. So, we start to lay out this ridwork of roadway connections and pedestrian connections and start to frame up the plan. So, we're creating rooms and then we start to fill the rooms, if you would, if you go through. Okay? Green space, very important, integral part of this. If you can envision a wheel, we really felt as we looked at a piece of property, a major central focus pedestrian park, something in here was a centerpiece of the development of these pedestrian spokes of a wheel that come out, tie not only to communities, surrounding neighborhoods, community at large, but also starts to tie various businesses in the property together in a green space fabric. Okay? So, now, as we turn it, twist that plan and start to see how that looks regionally, you can see around the Hudson's building as a centerpiece of this, some kind of pedestrian network that starts to link various neighborhoods down along Eight Mile, Providence, Greenshaw, you have an optimal for this together, First and Highway into a pattern that links everything in a green space fabric. Okay? So, now, as we put this, continuing to lay this framework out, you can see we then start to take and establish, again, our roadway network that links the major driveways and entrance points, trying to utilize along Greenfield, existing curb cuts that are there today, working that through, trying to try, tie in off the Hudson Drive, the major curfew plant and roadway systems that are there. So, again, we are linking the neighborhood and the roadway. We then take that roadway plan and we create what we call districts on top of it. And why districts? We start to, rather than going in there and laying out, this piece of property will be this used, this piece of property will be this used. On a large track of land, we don't know that, we got to let the marketplace figure that out, but we can create districts that start to have different flares in the marketplace and create different development patterns. So, as we walk through and start to lay our land use districts onto this, you can start to understand, what we see here, starting here, is what we call our shopping district down at this end. As you move, I'm going to jump around the north, we call this our innovation district, our shop innovation district, we would believe would be anchored with a multiple type of uses, offices, some supporting retail, some housing, a main influencer on our innovation district is Providence and what's going on in the problem. So, that's kind of where we locate it right there. And as we get along Northwestern Highway, we felt, again, these office buildings potentially as hotel site or another use starts to tie this innovation district together. Then, as we continue to look at contextually, we have our lifestyle districts, and I'll show you what these look like, they're the lifestyle districts, really along the entrance and along these neighborhoods, they're really our mixed-use districts, it's what the series is, retail, offices, housing, integrated, got it? And then this is all tied together with our park kind of district. We have two areas, we kind of like having this central park district, which is anchored by a major park space. These central districts could potentially have some office, it could potentially be anchored by residential, all kind of geared around this major park. And you can see from our plan, the anchor of this central park district is the Hudson Building. Now, understanding that this plan holds together whether or not Hudson Building is there or not, if that Hudson Building drops off, it's all part of the park, but we wanted to, we just bring this in as an anchor to this whole park. So, now, as we start to dream and create a vision, and this is really what I'm showing you right now at this point, how do we then start breaking this down and laying potential buildings and how much could we potentially have? So, we start to evolve this into how buildings, some basic principles that you will see in here, we're using, using buildings to frame roadways. Okay? So, we really go down through here and a lot of our roadways are framed by these buildings, whether they're residential, office buildings, retail uses, all anchored here. Starting to look at a preliminary yield here of where things really go through. Now, let's look at these things, and this is, again, dreaming in a, dreaming in a kind of vision of what this could look like. So, you start with our shopping district, again, down at this end, we know in our minds it's anchored by some large box users, it's probably one to two store uses, we think it's important to integrate green space, public space into that district. So, we don't know that these are the use, we don't know that this is an architecture. So, what I'm asking everybody is to dream a little bit about what this could feel like and look at it along the way. Powering along, again, with this vision and this story that we're sharing at this point. Okay? Our lifestyle districts. Our lifestyle districts are where the really vibrant integrated use of retail, living, offices, all kind of flow together. We're down with potential, first for retail, housing above that, some offices above that, again, vibrant pedestrian-focused space, outdoor dining, shops, all that, those we really would put into this kind of district. Our central park district, again, we believe this is one of the anchors of the project where we really look at a mixture of residential. where we really look at a mixture of residential, again, dreaming of the types of buildings that fit along here from a residential standpoint. We think that to a Hudson's Building, this building is great to do a mix of potentially some residential uses on the upper floors to that, some retail as we get to the ground levels, especially along the higher grades. And then on the lower level, opening up into the park, we could actually see recreation uses, whether it's a health club, whether it's something like that that's falling into this building. Again, this is all tied with an integrated park district. And one of the things that really came out of our charade that we were really excited about is saying, let's take this lower area of Hudson's Building that I think you're familiar with down there. Let's not fill it up to grade. Let's start to open it up, integrate maybe even some of the walls from the tunnels and some other things into this and use it as a multipurpose thing. Use it one to solve a regional stormwater problem that we know we will have in the development of this property. Because right now, it doesn't need stormwater or water, and so we really need to create some kind of centralized stormwater system. But we could also create a park space that's very vibrant and has water, that has different elevations and trails. What we used for a model was Fourth Ward Park, which is in Atlanta. Here's some shots of it, where again, you can see an amphitheater. We would envision that along the lower level, potentially Hudson's Building. You can see tiered areas along the sides, walkways, sitting areas, vibrant spaces. That is a stormwater basin that really starts to fill up. This area at Fourth Ward Park was a very rundown section of Atlanta. They came in and they built this park as a major park space. And what they've seen is the area adjacent to this park rapidly developed, increasing values with residential, with offices. They created an anchor that people wanted to be around, that people wanted to use. That's our vision, where we believe this park could become a northbound site. It could become our centerpiece or heart where public activity is going on and will really drive, we believe, high values as we start to look all the way around the development of this park. We can do that, we can also double and solve the stormwater problem at the same time. So again, that's kind of the overall vision we're dreaming. Our innovation district, we see as multiple two to three story office buildings, probably also mixed in retail, also mixed in some residential. We call it innovation because we believe what Providence is doing and exciting things they're doing, we can also leverage off of that and bring some of that innovation and higher tech stuff to the site development along adjacent to us. So that is kind of our plan with the districts laid on top. You can see kind of the overall network. So let me show you again, three dimensionally, if we continue to dream what this could look like. These are simply diagrams, help everybody understand the scale of the buildings. So looking from Northwestern Highway, you can see our park. You can see Hudson's Building is the anchor of that, it's a potential amphitheater located along that side of the building. So as they start to frame and develop along roadways, our larger retail format down here, our innovation district, which includes some housing, some area down here for park space. You know, our power plant that we could believe could be envisioned as something, a mix of retail restaurants all within that district. Again, looking at it from any different directions. Again, you can see the centerpiece being Hudson's Building. And you can see how all these residential buildings, we can believe could potentially two to three story buildings, some four story buildings lining, potential hotel location. Again, lining with vibrant green spaces. Our areas up front, again, with our lifestyle centers, which are the combination of retail and housing. Again, another look from three way back down to. So that is a vision of where we are with this plan. I am sure there is a load of questions. Maybe I can bring the design team, or Ken and Aaron back up. And I think we'll open this up to answer some of the questions. I know we threw a lot at it in a pretty quick period of time, so there's probably questions not important. Are there any questions? I'm glad everybody understands. Mr. Focaccia?
Go ahead. Dan's got a question. Just generically, in the overall, in the scheme where you all work, what type of issues does this project have an issue with?
We hope by the time we're done rolling this out, there has a lot of interest. One of the major issues facing across this entire country is mall sites that have failed. So this isn't unique to Southfield. There's mall sites around the entire country. We believe that what we're creating here could be a vibrant model to show how you take these mall sites and bring them back to the community. So I think this all goes together. The P I that Aaron's talked about, the programming of the space, the activities that goes on, all this is around building excitement from the development community and doing the publicity that shows that this is a very special thing.
So this might prove to be a template for nationwide?
We hope so. I mean, as, again, as a design team, we brought R T K on. It's probably the number one retail mixed-use architecture firm in the country. That's why we brought them to the table. They're very excited about this. They believe this is a model that can be used throughout the country.
I think the key is that the plan and the vision is really aligning with what the new economy is demanding, with both the boomers, which Ken talked about, and the millennials, which make up roughly 170 million people. We're all trending towards. So in essence, we're responding to the trend, trying to get ahead of it, to create the things that they want, both from workforce development, for the hospital, for the college, quality of life things that really don't exist yet right within that marketplace.
The other thing you asked us to do, the team, is think big. When we started this, think big. So we believe it's that kind of effort that will put this property on the map and will bring a lot of attention and help it to sell. But we believe it has the potential to do that. I think Ken shows the numbers are there, they do this, they do a great job of it.
In respect to keeping the Hudson's location, are options you can get from a architectural standpoint? Now, I was thinking of this, things are better out there. But what, what was the, I mean, the potentially, from a dreaming standpoint, what was the name of that location?
Well, one of the nice things that works in that building, I'm starting to, I'm starting to hang on slides, is that building has a couple of things for it. One, it's got very high floor ceiling heights. That's very appealing right now from a residential. That's why you see residential going, so vibrant in downtown Detroit, because there are spaces that are not being built today. So we believe residential is a component of that building. We also believe that as you look at the grade changes, as you've got two thirds of that building at one grade and then another third at lower grade, that allows us an opportunity to potentially add some recreational uses via health, you know, health club, gym, you know, a public recreation center down at the lower grade that opens up to the park. And then on the other three sides, we have retail. I don't know if you recognize this from the plan, but in one core of this, right here, which is very important to the reuse of this building, is understanding that this floor plate is too big. So what we're recommending is that you core the center of it out. So if you can imagine this cutting a core out of it, what that does is it takes the, these dimensions and makes them work for housing, because no one wants to live near very windows. So it creates windows on the interior, windows on the exterior, and creates an opportunity to build vibrant space in the middle.
One thing I want to point out, because this question has come up, is that that building's not going to look like it looks today. So it's going to have to be reskinned and we'll try to keep attributes that pay homage to the original 21st century architectures have. But it's going to look different, look and feel different, but it'll still be iconic and that's there and has similar lines to it.
Okay, just one other question. With respect to market, I know Ken gave us a lot of demographics. I mean, a lot of numbers, good respect to what's going on, people wise. Is there a market out there? But what you put up here, is there a global market that would draw people to that location?
This concept is not untested. This just happens to be a mall site that is giving us a unique opportunity to do something with 125 acres in the middle of a huge number of people. But the concept itself is not untested. We see this integrated use development all over the country. And when you bring those things together, you end up with rent premiums. When I talked about amenities earlier, we actually have an amenity rating that we give to this kind of development that allows us to get, in some cases upwards of 50% rent premium if we have the underlying characteristics of the product.
I think Ken said it very important, someone too, is a ton of people around this. Again, I think we heard early on when we saw this, this is a rundown mall. This couldn't possibly be good for anything, what can you do with this? We look at it differently. We look at 125 acres sitting with a large amount of population all the way around it. That's the driver. You know, if this was a mall sitting in the middle of a vacant cornfields, you couldn't possibly do this. But since you've got this amount of people and businesses, everything involving them, that's the key that will help this lead to all conditions successful. Mr. Focaccia?
I guess, I've got too many notes here. But let me, I guess I'm going to be out of the box. And I compliment you on the work you've done and the plan that you came to. The thing that I am concerned about is that we have players in this that don't come to the table. And until they come to the table and find out what, how they're going to participate in this, you really don't know what direction, I'm talking about the city, what direction to go. And things that have been done, and I say by Providence Hospital and selling the Millennium Theater, to me suggests that they're not going to have expansion because you wouldn't sell these properties in the middle of a development. Now, I have not been, it's all in these talks with Providence and with the minister of church, but the steering committee, which has a certain amount of information, seems to me that we have to first understand what's going to happen to those individuals, I mean, in or out. And to this day, I still don't have an answer whether in or out. And then I look at a return on investment from the city center. I mean, the purchase price, the cost that we're going through with consultants, getting the property cleaned up, the carrying down of the facility, walking neighborhood, what, 25 million, something easy? But how much to tear it up?
Ten.
Ten to twelve is the high end.
Yeah, ten to twelve is tear it down.
That's the high end.
What's the cost plus target? In other words, I mean, you say 20 million dollars. That's going to be expended in getting through, just the point of looking at the design. Then I'm looking at all the infrastructure that's going to have to be built to get to this point. And what's the cost of building the sewers, water, and paving the streets? And whatever other things that happen to the common cause. And I guess I'm a kind of a realist and I guess I personally felt from the very beginning that this should have been tore down and put on a market and had a developer come and develop it. But it seems like, I really don't know if we are the developers and we're getting developers to come in and look at the certain divided areas to see if they're interested in one part or the other. I guess that's a question I also have. Is it going to be dividing up the sections to developers? Is a developer looking at the entire plan and coming up with something that they think will be marketable? I mean, I think there's a lot of questions that I have. I mean, everything I'm looking at today is great, but getting there is going to be a real thing for the city to get involved in. And I just don't know, they're just like the big box. And just, you can say, you know, we've got a big box coming, but there's things like, are there problems there, correct? I mean, I'm not going to get into specifics, but there's a problem here. And then I have a problem with the church buying, we have two parcels there, and I don't know whether or not, you know, is that a good anchor for a new development? If we sell off part of the Northland to the church? I don't know. I don't know what that, what happens when that becomes an anchor to the balance of the property. I mean, I would hope that if we would have a clear idea of what those two groups are going to do. And like I said, somebody asked me about, I don't know how they know about it, but the big box, the big box, we're already talking about who's going in there and I don't even know if and when and how it can proceed until we make a decision on something. I'm sorry I'm going around the horn on this, not being specific, but I don't know what I can say and what I can't say as far as legality that, if you want to talk about.
If I may, we will be requesting a closed door for a number of topics. And one of those topics is to discuss property.
I think we can answer a number of those questions.
But I'd like to have a cost analysis and that's very important. I mean, the city, I don't want the city to get involved in a government park, the movie thing, and get into this and hit the tax gear with old village and whatever comes up to put in all the infrastructure and the projects. Cities are not developers. They never have been and never have were. Developers lose experience and like Ken knows the markets. Well, they know the marketplaces because they get a guy like Ken to tell them. But at the same time, I get really kind of not really confident that the city has the ability to do anything at large. And that's why my suggestion from the very beginning was to fill seed itself. You know, and then you know exactly what's going to come about, know where our cost is, what our return is going to be and how we're going to, you know, somebody's going to have to pay for infrastructure. You know, it's like buying a house, you know, and nobody knows, you know, 14,000 to put on a roof, or 25,000 to put in a kitchen, $10,000 to put in a bathroom. You know, it's a housework. I mean, I don't want to bury the city in costs that we can hand back up. And I know I've just got a lot of things here, but I'd have to organize it to come up with a true feeling of what I think about the whole project. I know that's why I certainly tend to see this thing and then go back and study it and come up with things that I feel cities should be responsible for and what private developers should be privy to and for how they do things. And yes, there's a lot of shopping centers, some that's another one that are being looked at to redevelop them. I don't know what path they're going to use to do that, but they may go the same route we're going, I don't really know. But I guess, I really get concerned, you know, when you look at all the parking lots there, you know, you get a cost of parking lot, you know, what's a car, about $3,000 a car to put in a parking?
Sure.
Or parking space?
Sure.
No, it's 25, no, 12 to 20,000.
For parking space.
For parking, they get a deck, it's about 3,000, 4,000 per car for a parking lot. And you look at all those parking lots, you know, I mean, I don't, those are my comments. I'll have more if I dig into.
Well, maybe I could answer some of those.
Sure, go ahead.
So I'm just kind of jotting down a number of things that you're saying as you're talking. I want to be sure our team can answer all, address.
I'm sorry, I'm really not going down the line of my presentation. But this is the way it was thought to me and I've got a lot of notes here and those are the kind of the highlights. Just like marketing, how can you market something when you really don't know what you're marketing? If they have something on sale, they don't have anything on sale.
That's exactly it, right? So one of the things, you talked about cost, you talked about the hospital, which I know Jim can answer, the development strategy, you know, you talked about the big box, generally those little things. things. On the cost perspective, you know, as Ken said, you're not alone, right? There are a lot of things like this happening in the market. There are a lot of communities doing the same exact thing with the goal, one goal in mind, being proactive, setting a vision in place and an expectation of what you want to see versus just reacting to whatever comes to you and things happen haphazardly and you get the car lot here and the fire stove here and the gas station here. I think what you've said as a community, we're taking a pause, we have one shot, and we're going to put the right vision and the right development strategy so that they're reacting to us, and you can coordinate the development. And essentially, that's what we're doing. We're going through the process to put that plan together, because the cost of not doing that to this community far probably exceeds the cost of just trying to get it done and get it done, right? Because you're talking the next hundred years, right? And so I think that's the initiative and that's the ask. In terms of the hospital, I know, Jim, you've had a lot of.
Well, we met with the hospital as a team, and their CEO, their COO is here today. I mean, we were very excited about what we heard from them, and their commitment to the community and their commitment to being a partner in a lot of ways with the development of property.
See, Jim, I'm coming from not knowing what.
Well, I'm going to let Joe.
And apparently this is really the place to talk about what they're doing.
Well, we talked about how we can be mindful of their presence so that this plan and this strategy is actually supporting them or reacting to making them.
Well, again, we met with them, we're excited about them, we believe that they will have a role in this, and if you've got questions, Joe, he'd be glad to tell you that personally for the same.
I want to know why they sold the Millennium Theater. It's one question I like to ask.
Well, on that one, I'm not sure.
Well, I'm just saying, if you're expanding, you don't sell anything that's right in the middle of your head, and then you're going to expand and somebody else owns it.
Well, again, I want to keep it on kind of.
No, no, go ahead.
And again, we believe that, as Aaron said, creating this vision, more than likely there'll be more than one developer. If you sell this thing without a vision to one developer, he controls the vision. And I don't think anybody in this community invested in this community, in this property, so that they could let somebody else control the vision. So, again, I think more than likely you'll see multiple developers in here, and that's a framework and a pattern that they can work on.
Right.
So, you know, those are areas going forward. The city is not, and is not the intent of this team, and I don't believe it's the intent of the city to actually be the developer and start paying for streets, buildings, and roads. Somebody else will do all that. This is setting a vision that we're telling the community, this is our vision coming, and in order to maximize the value of that, you've got to say the community has a vision, the community's behind the vision, and then we'll bring the developer communities to the table. That's how you create and maximize the values. And again, I want to remember everybody, one of the key member of our team was Tom Carter, who has developed a dozen of these, including Easton, which is one of the most premier ones in the country. He understands how to create vision and how to create stuff.
He's developed, right?
Yeah, he was a developer of this, and he's our development consultant in this team, okay? So, he has brought that expertise of how do we create vision to maximize the marketplace? And that's what we're trying to do. If you fill this, if you tore it down, did a fill and put a for-sale sign on it, you're handing that vision over to somebody else. And I don't think you, as a community, that's in your best interest, nor that you acquired this property to hand that to somebody else. So that's why I think it's important.
Well, Council President, let me just address the council. You know, as further back we were, we had many unanswered questions. We continue to have unanswered questions, but as the plan begins to formulate, a lot of those questions are being addressed. I think that, into Councilman Focaccia's concern about the rate of return, if you take and keep the tunnel, you've cut maybe 50% of your demolition cost in half already. So your rate of return is going to be a lot quicker. I can tell you that we have gotten, myself, Shelley, and Fred have received calls from developers, either wanted by the whole property, and there are developers outside of Michigan, or have pushed us to the point that we are today to begin development now. Now, the way that we are proceeding, I think that one of the key points is that Jim and his group are going to do is we're going to have this invitation only to developers, which everyone will get an invitation here. That's going to sort of have them look at the plan and say, this isn't work, this is going to work. So you have a check and balance, all right, approach of things. So that's going to happen on the 23rd. Based on that input and the input of the public, which is still the comment, Jim and his team are going to go back and modify the plan to the point where they're going to bring you a final version, and hopefully you'll approve that version. But I still think, Don, that there are a lot of unanswered questions that we all have, but as the plan form relates, those questions will get answered.
Okay. Mayor?
We had a meeting last week, you know, there's been a little gap in the communication with Providence Hospital because there's a change in leadership. Dr. Wyman, who represented the hospital for some time, has moved on to something else. And Dr. Hirsch is here tonight, and he outlined, and I don't want to speak for him, but at the meeting we had, it was very productive last week, he outlined five needs of the hospital and affirmed that they're staying here and they're growing. So perhaps Dr. Hirsch could have a minute to speak to those five areas.
Thank you, ma'am.
You yield the floor to Dr. Hirsch.
I'm sorry?
You're yielding the floor to Dr. Hirsch.
Yeah, but I'd like the floor back.
Thank you and good evening, Council. I do want to professionally correct my credentials. I am not a physician. I'm a Master of Prepared Healthcare Executive and a Fellow in the American College of Healthcare Executives, so those would be my professional credentials. I previously served as the Chief Operating Officer for the last seven years, effective May 8th, I've been appointed, board approval, to serve as the president of Providence Hospital. I've been doing that over the last 60 days. I will tell you that I've been impressed to see the work that has been being done over a period of time. Many of the concepts that me and the members of my hospital executive team discussed with this development team that's here have been actively reflected in this evening's presentation. I will tell you that we are here to stay. I will tell you that we too continue to reinvest in the community over the last four years. I can tabulate and reflect on about $30 million of campus-based improvements. Moreover, none more important than partnerships we've had with the recent improvements made to the roadways in and around Providence Hospital off of the Nine Mile and Greenfield corridors. We too participated in that with work that's been done around our parking lots, the apron points of entry in and around the campus, directional signage and other things that we've done to beautify the landscape and the approach of the hospital. We'll continue to make those reinvestments. It's also very important that I share with you this evening, as I stand before you, that we have 16 academic educational programs, eight residencies that are housed in Southfield, and eight fellowships. That yields a total of 142 graduate medical education students. About six weeks ago, you may have read some press releases that we had. We are now the Southeast Michigan campus of Michigan State University, the College of Human Medicine, with as partners in the room. I know you find that attractive. We started 30 new students this year that have three-year commitments to our campus, and we are very, very excited about that. I know innovation was referenced in tonight's program. We are underway right now, soon unveiling a $4 million medical library on site of Providence Hospital accompanied by a medical simulation center that'll be constructed on the lower level of the hospital. We've been rated as one of the top 15 teaching institutions in these United States of America. We've also been ranked eight of the nine last years as a top 100 hospital for quality within various metrics of healthcare delivery. So with that, I represent some 2,000-plus associates and some of the finest physicians in healthcare, some 1,500 that are credentialed, provide medical services and practice medicine at Providence Hospital. So that demonstrates some of our commitment. I'll just leave you with one comment that I found of extreme interest tonight. When you talk about districts and you talk about lifestyle, we have a magnificent need for what I'll call mid-rise housing for some of the 142 graduate medical education students that I referenced. We also see the lifestyle development to be very attractive to us, and I will tell you that we already view ourselves as the medical district part of that plan. We view ourselves as a strong component of the innovation and will be very complimentary to what we're trying to do with our mission and our vision as well. And we do plan on being very active participants in the plans as it goes forward. We thank you for the opportunity to be in on the ground level, and you will find us to be tremendous partners. With that, I'm going to turn the floor back over. Thank you.
Before you leave the microphone, could you give us your full name and address, business address for our records?
I would be happy to. My full name is Joseph Richard Hershey, and my business address is right at Providence Hospital. I'm located on the sixth floor of the Fisher Center. That is where my primary office is, and that's where you'll find me throughout the course of the week.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And Mayor, you went forward.
Also, Mr. Hershey didn't mention that in our discussion, they're at a shortage of medical office space, and that, I remember this, it was parking you needed yesterday, medical office, housing, lifestyle center, fitness, and.
Restaurant.
Couple good restaurants.
We did. We identified five major priorities, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say that the PMV, as we call it, the glass building on the campus of Providence, is over 95% occupied as we stand here today. That means that we have physicians that are clamoring to be in on the campus and use medical office space. We do have an amazing need, and I know in the early rendering that was depicted this evening, you had planned a call for about two years or so, and again, with that need, we should be able to use it right away. So that is of extreme importance, but the impact to our ability to provide medical services. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
To the team, as I told them when we had the last meeting, I really liked what you've come up with. I think you listened to the various feedback. I also am very big on adaptive reuse, so the tunnels, the power plant, the Hudson's building, very glad to see that. Earlier this year, we had, you know, we've had a stream, as Al has mentioned, we've had a stream of people coming, really probably about one a week with some idea for Northland or interest, questions about Northland and developing it. So I'm very optimistic that something is going to happen here, and we will have, it'll be successful, and we do have a lot of interest. But one of the really pretty dynamic presentations we had, and I know that our business development, Shelley, she's here somewhere, is the need for R and D space, and the fact that this site is so centrally located throughout Southeastern Michigan that it would be ideal for that. And I didn't hear you speak to that at all, so I don't know if you could comment on that.
Yeah, I think two places within the office component, the R and D space, and I think in.
I didn't hear specifically R and D.
And I didn't mention specifically. But between medical and R and D and education, those are the three areas that are absorbing most of the office space, and that takes a lot of different cores. I think that the innovation area for R and D is, would be an ideal area to focus for that sort of application. Plus, we have the education in the area as well, which supports the R and D as well.
Good. Ms. Morris?
Yes, a couple things. You're showing here that you have the tall buildings bordering the districts that people own or the roadways, and so I was wondering what the walkability is or what it means to the different districts.
One of the things you can see here, first off, what's so important is we bring these buildings to the edge of the streets, and we develop a character. All these buildings will have large pedestrian walkways in between the buildings, so we develop a character that's much more stronger than looking at a big parking lot. And so that's what we try. That is the newest trend, it's not really new, it's really going back to the old, but it's really framing space with buildings, and that's really what adds the quality of the pedestrian space moving forward. We've also created pedestrian linkages. You can see there's a major pedestrian linkage.
Can you expand it on the 3D?
On a flash plan?
The larger one, and what was this one?
Just go to segment 13 and see.
There, good. If you can see, you know, for example, along those roadways, a major green pedestrian space. You can see another pedestrian smile. This one moves over toward the hospital property. There's a major pedestrian network that wraps through here, wraps through over toward the area down here. There's green space along the perimeter of this. There's another space right here that ties up in toward Oakland, you know, and links in that we're working with Terry for ways that we can link it into a bigger pedestrian network that ties up to the college. So, all these districts are linked with these pedestrian funds that kind of link off together, and then of course, there's our major arc space hallway.
And then on one of the earlier slides, you mentioned that the community was hungry for family type of programming and activities, but I didn't really hear you speak to that in the development. I know I was down at Campus Martius the other night, and they had the big projector screen, they show movies all the time. Is that something that you anticipate for the, was it the livability or one of the districts?
Lifestyle. Lifestyle, sorry. We created outdoor rooms, and now it's up to the city, together with the private sector, to fill the room. So you have a new parks director. How you're going to interact and program that space is really going to be up to you, but also the private sector, right? So a lot of the things that will happen out there are going to be programmed by the future users of the site, whether you're a retailer, you're a fitness center, and bringing those people that typically would stay inside out into that space. And, you know, Jim was talking about the pedestrian, did you notice how fuzzy this is still, and that's intended to be that way because it's a draft work in progress? So a lot of those things get figured out along the way. But exactly how you program that space, whether you have a family movie night, or you have a 5K run, and you do things for all different age groups and abilities, that has to be that process. Basically, we have to create the opportunity for that to occur. If we, again, if we just paved the site and we had three, four car sales lots, you know, that's the opportunity's gone. So really what we're doing is creating the opportunity for that.
And if I could piggyback too, you know, one of the things these guys didn't spend too much time other than, we got a big hole that has to be filled, and that costs a lot of money, and then you just got a blank slate. They took the low spot and said, we got to drain 120, 125 acres of stormwater management. Instead of having each section or district provide their own stormwater management or put it all underground, which could be expensive, is the mass of the site drains into the low point, which then becomes an amenity. And then as development takes place, each development would buy into that, that common drainage area, which then becomes more than a pond, it becomes focal, a focal point for active and passive recreation. And that's one of the things I thought was innovative, is they dealt with some of the practical issues, what do you do with a site that's 125 acres and is mostly asphalt? Is in today's standards, and we get this with each development, they come in, there's a 100-year, you know, flood plain, flood event, they have to deal with, and they are spending lots of money doing underground storage or trying to find the space to deal with that water. And this is really an adaptive reuse, not just in a building or two, but it's a site that can really become an amenity that in itself can become an acre, an anchor to drawing people there. And a lot of times, again, so we're very excited to have Terry on the board about the programming space, it starts with getting people to visit the space in a new way. And I think there's a lot of opportunities with the public space, you've heard me say. There's a mile and a half perimeter greenbelt that could be easily incorporated in the beginning, that starts getting people from the neighborhood walking, jogging, biking, as we develop these different various pieces of the larger puzzle. It then becomes an amenity for everything within the district and outside the district.
And if we go back to the things that the public wanted, which was water, everybody wants to reconnect with water, we have water, walking trails, outdoor amphitheater entertainment space, all those ingredients are in here. I wonder, you know, what that water feature looks like. I wonder, you know, what that water feature looks like. We're not going to get that far along through this process. But we've identified and placed them within this plan strategy.
Mr. Manabom?
A couple of questions. I like the plan, what the concept. Currently, there's the bus depot that we have. Is that going to be moved to another location? Is that going to be added?
I can, I can do a third for this. And the reason I want to jump in is, I've had twenty years working on this regional concept of these transfer centers, transportation centers. Al and I, I'm not sure if Mr. Zorn were available, but we've had several conversations with both SMART and DDOT. They want to get away from all this money and infrastructure in one place and start creating more transfer points as opposed to a transportation center. And they've said that they could give us better service in the district, right? Creating multiple transfer points along Nine Mile adjacent to OCC, near the hospital, and loop into it. So there will be a component, and they're not down, haven't drilled down to where all the bus stops are yet, but there is an interconnected system that working with both SMART and DDOT is going to be a very important part of this project without creating a center in itself.
I guess the same question would be with the community police station that we have there. I know you referenced it earlier, that they built into the area, is there a specific district that you would recommend?
Well, again, we believe that there will be a police substation or something within here. Again, there's various opportunities that are out there right now that are being explored to that. But again, there's expressed interest, I think, from all sides, that we integrate that within the design.
And it's crime prevention through environmental design, it's eyes on the street. It's not the traditional police substation. I've mentioned before, the walkable mixed-use community my daughter lives in has a storefront that's the community policing center. And they're out there on their bikes and walking, but there is an actual address that you can go up to. But it looks like just any other storefront on the first floor of a mixed-use building. And I think that it would take some shape and form of that.
Yes.
Probably in your core area.
That becomes more of a, you know, as opposed to the lockdown substation, a community resource center, where you may have, you know, police officers there, but it's much more accessible, it's much more transparent than the system you have now. And that's really what you want to see, you want to feel that presence within here.
Yeah, we talked about adding a lot of walkability. Are there any opportunities to add additional, or is there a need to add any additional bridges or pedestrian crossings over the, over the large, through the-
We didn't actually explore that, Terry.
Well, we've got a larger non-motorized master plan. Again, I'm very excited with Terry being here because I think there's an opportunity to actually get some grants and create an urban trail system that we can get some funding to help get this implemented. I believe, you know, that the evolution may be an additional pedestrian bridge, but I think that we need to create the destination first and then we can look at logical linkages. Now, when we did, when we did the sub-area plans, from the edge of the DDA to the edge of the city center is only a mile. And we're starting as we, as we put Northwestern Highway on road diets, you've already seen it. There's a bike lane that's been put in, we're working on non-motorized path. That's a one-mile bike route from Lawrence Stock down to the edge of this. And I think those things can be much more easily incorporated than spending millions of dollars building a bridge right now.
On Southfield Road, we created this look between twelve and thirteen with different placemaking things that we put in that we have developers added. Is there, does it make sense to do a long-
I'm going to take this too. And what I would say to you, Mr. Manabom, is that we've been able to do that because we've had demand and we've been lucky that we've had six to ten developments that have come in all at the same time. But we don't have a unified system. We've, we're fortunate that twelve in Southfield set the tone and we've been saying, we want more of this. But we've been working very closely with this team and we know that it's part parcel that we will have design standards that will be incorporated as part of the overlay development district. The good news is the city's, you know, leadership saw the foresight of adopting the overlay development district as an umbrella tool. Now, as we get close to a plan, we'll start rolling out adopting an overlay development district specific to the one hundred and twenty acres that are going to have design guidelines. You know, you could go as far as a pattern book, but we don't want to be so regulated that there's a formula. But it will set the tone for the types of architecture, the types of public space and the types of pedestrian amenities that we want to see. And as we get the ten-acre, fifteen-acre, twenty-acre developers coming in, they'll have to conform to that. So it is, I think it's an important, critical piece that'll come out of all the visioning and placemaking and surveys that we can then articulate in a guidebook that can be adopted as part of the overlay development district.
The tunnel system, was that, was that looked at as potential parking? Or is it, I haven't been down there, so I don't-
You don't want to go down there.
But is that something that we can have more green space or more use above ground?
We looked at it more specifically just to get a support of the buildings that were there. You know, again, I think where we are today is not having a clear understanding of exactly what those buildings are, how they sit. It's not an easy answer. Can it work? Yes, it's not an easy answer. So I think there's areas that are clearly defined that could be adapted into that. For example, if we say the Hudson's building, there's areas we should probably look at to say, can some of that support it? I think right now, we have to be flexible enough to allow that to happen, coming in to make sense. If there isn't a good use, if it doesn't work viability from an economic standpoint, then it shouldn't be there. And I think we try to build in that flexibility into the plan to really allow that decision to be made as a success tool.
I think this is my last question. With your proposed water runoff pond, which obviously looks very nice there, if there just becomes too much water or standing too long, obviously can develop algae and other, you know, it can be breeding around mosquitoes or whatever, is there-
We can always have the Olympics.
Would there be some type of setup?
Absolutely. Again, in a very sophisticated way, handle all that, move the water, make sure it's clear, have the right depths, fountains to, you know, all those things. You know, what we're really looking at is as we develop this, bring the best technology we can bring to the table on how to handle stormwater, but rather than putting it in pipes, let's put it in an area that's an amenity. And we believe that we can bring that technology to make sure it's a hundred percent treated correctly, but also, and do it in a way that's an amenity and a feature for the community.
And that becomes part of the brand of the project, right? Of innovation and sustainability. And it opens the door for a lot of opportunities for funding when you have large green infrastructure components to it. So you have three things, you have, it's a great amenity, it's do the right thing, and then it's funding opportunities to help facilitate that.
So would you add in other types of newer technology for energy? Like, you know, like a wind, not necessarily a wind farm, or, you know, but solar panels or things like that?
I think, I think all of those things are things that need to be looked at as we look down the line. I think those are things that have to be evaluated as individual uses come in and understand the costs associated with this, the technology, where it is at the time. But we clearly see that, I think, on the other way back to the first slide that Aaron shared with you of the principles that are really driving this thing. We believe that innovation, technology are all things that are very integral to the success of this project.
If I could just add, I mean, I handed out a copy of Sustainable Southfield that you adopted in June. And as you know, I'm very proud of this. This really sets people to have a project, the implementation arm of all the things that we talked about that could- It's sustainability, environmental, social and economic. If we do this right, as you said, I feel that everybody in the country will be coming. And I think there's, you know, I'm a guy that's three-quarters full, not half-full, not half-empty, right? But I believe the synergy of the public spaces, the green space, we are holding off developers, but we want to do it right. And I firmly believe what Ken had said about the housing market, I've been talking about that there's built-up demand. And if we don't start striking when iron's hot, you know, we're going to lose. We're going to have those, more sellers than there are buyers for these large, single-family homes. And I think there's a niche. And that niche, those rooftops support all the other things that we've been talking about. I could, I could easily see the north with Providence Hospital's been doing and some of the south start working towards a center that we could, you know, develop some of this public usable space and start to see, I firmly believe housing is going to be one of the first developers in the game. It's going to help draw some of the other things that we're doing as well as some of the innovative offers.
And I think Terry makes a great point. When you talk about sustainability, often we talk about it as green and all that. Economic sustainability is very big, it's important. And what are we doing here, Ken will attest to that, by bringing in a well-planned mixed-uses, we are no longer having, we're bringing economic sustainability to the property so you don't have the situation you had previously where you have one major use occupying one hundred and twenty-five acres and all of a sudden, if that use isn't viable anymore, you got natural field of dead. The right way to do it is through this well-planned integrated mixed-uses.
Mr. Ferguson?
I guess, I guess I look at these plans and I kind of feel like I have no empath to what I say. For Mr. Hershey's benefit, let me tell you, I was on the board at Providence Hospital and I was also executive committee on SimCog and looking at the 2035 plan and where people were going. You know, I ran into a young man named Tommy Langdon, but he golf course out there. And I said, you know, that's northwest of our present hospital, I think you need that for expansion. And then Conley and then we had a fight with the board because nobody wanted to buy it. But we ended up winning because his sisters stayed with me and we bought that, they bought that property. They bought the southwest corner side. They didn't buy it with the shopping center. And then I heard that they're going to put the bridge across and I said, guys, you better buy the other piece. They bought it for three million dollars. And they got Mr. Jonah to develop that shopping center. So I know where I'm coming from and I know what's happening. And I'm seeing there are things that, that sometimes I think we're overlooking at the challenge that we have with this piece. And I would be remiss if I don't come to the table and say that it's all beautiful. I mean, there's nothing I could criticize anybody for doing. I'm listening to Terry. But I'm not visiting, you know? And we have a city that doesn't, that's down forty percent in value. And I'm concerned about the city, what I, the hat I'm wearing. And looking at this and say, can I really afford to do these things? And if I do, what are my partners? Who are my partners? And sorry to say that the steering committee did not meet with Providence. It was a select group that met with you. Well, you can't hear half of the stories and try to make a decision based on only the things that you hear, but not the things that are going on in the background. And I think that everybody should put everything on the table, then you could get a feeling of where this is going. And park land is great, walking and biking and all, you know, maintenance and that. Terry, I mean, it's great, but somebody's got to pay for it, somebody's got to do it. I mean, there's no way the city could pick up the park to recreation and work through it and redo all these parks. There's no way on earth. They don't have enough money over here to build a ballpark. So it's good to dream, it's good to have vision, but I'm just trying to say, I've talked, the biggest developer in the United States, and I asked him, when we bought this, what do you think we should do with that? And he said, Phil Seigman, get out of it. Now, he's talking to me, he's helping me, when I have to make a decision for the city. To develop it and get developers to come in and play a major role in doing this would be unbelievable. Would it be a showcase? Absolutely, absolutely. And I am just, have a concern of who my partners are. And I really don't believe that the church can be an anchor to this piece. And we keep giving them another four acres on top of the millennium, you know? And I don't know what role that has or what effect that has, impact it has on the total development. I mean, I'd like to see that development, what they're going to do, and see what the Providence wants to do and what the city wants to do and what kind of development's going forward, to see what they say. And then you get a real feel of what is possible and what is just a dream. And right now, you know, I have to put the hat on for the city. And I just know that we have a cap on how much we can spend, that I'm getting into trouble. And I want to keep putting that on the table each and every time I sit in this seat. And I'm going to express myself that way. Is it great? Could that happen? I'll approve it tomorrow. Tell me who's going to do it, where the money's going to come from, you know, and we're going to pay for it. Go ahead, you have my blessing.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Graywell?
One discussion perhaps, that we brought the fact that, you know, I think you might have answered this in the last night, we have an amphitheater and like a year-round performance theater or something. Is that part of what you brought up before that, there is a proposed, you know, recommended amphitheater?
Yep, I think this is very loose. We're not actually designing you an amphitheater.
Sure.
We're putting into the program the concept for the redevelopment. So, yes, the idea is that there would be, you know, whether it's here or here, or up there.
The idea of that.
Absolutely, yes.
The other thing is that this is probably, I think you might have asked this also. Once this goes out, the RAQ or whatever, the park land, this could take twenty years, twenty, thirty years or whatever.
Yeah, and again, if we go back to the presentation, we've designed in flexibility of the plan. What you're seeing with all these buildings, is they, will it end up just like that? No. But we've developed in the framework that will deliver the quality, especially as we move down the line, as Terry indicates, with the standards zoning that we started to establish a framework of districts, roadway systems, integrated green spaces and standards that will allow the market to have some flexibility but still give you the quality of what's being said.
We believe that this framework is very real. You know, where the building sits, what the green space exactly looks like, does have to be determined. But based on the existing conditions and connectivity and the infrastructure and how this sets up for these development blocks, this is a project. That's, that could be a project of a different development, all working in a, of standards to make the whole thing come together. So we do feel pretty confident about that existing framework.
The good news is we have site control over most of the site. So we can dictate what we want and don't want. But ultimately, we want to sell it, flip it, partner with. And this helps guide what we want, but more importantly, it helps keep out what we don't want.
Right.
You know, and that's, it's a balancing. There's going to be some fine-tuning, some flexibility. But I don't think anybody wants ten pads of one-story drive-through fast-food restaurants. We could, we could make that decision, we could carve up Greenfield Road and probably get ten one-acre sites and get that today. But that's, I don't think that's what anybody wants. And the sum of the parts are greater than the whole in this particular case. And I do firmly believe that within, as soon as these things let out, we'll start getting some real bites at pieces of this that fit into our plan, the housing being one. Maybe some type of office innovative district that supports the hospital. Without the hospital being the developer, but the hospital could say, we've got forty, yeah, forty residents coming in a year, we have a commitment of this many- We have a commitment of this many. You said it yourself, our guests, our faculty, our students, our staff need quality places to eat. And that they could help support maybe the innovative brew pub, restaurant, art theater.
Yes.
Scheme class, all in one. I certainly would want to go there. And that's one of those things that we've talked about. There's a few coming up in the region. Archdeco buildings being adaptively reused by any right entrepreneur that could draw people in from all of Metro Detroit as a starting point. The pop-up, the pop-up drive-in theater, the art, the Eat to the Beat concerts out on North Lamalle starts getting people used to coming and seeing it in a different light. Those are all things we can work on right now.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. One of the early slides, when you did the demographics, it was under 45 years, between 45 and 65 and over 65. And one of the statements you stated was that the under 45 wanted big, single-family homes, to purchase, single-family homes. And if I heard you correctly. And that sort of flies in the face of what Michigan Municipal League has said about the millennials is that they do not want to buy a home because they don't intend to stay in any one place for very long. And they're gonna change jobs 12 to 15 times during their lifetime. So they want a place where they can rent. And when it's time for them to move on, it's not so complicated that they're gonna have to find a place to sell. So how did you, you know? Can you hit me?
That's a problem with taking a group of people and saying, they do this. They don't all do that. Some of them do and the majority do. But there is a component of that group that also has a family and wants that family in a single-family environment. And we're not saying that it's housing for everybody. But we want to create an environment where we are attracting people that if they are of that group that would rather be in a single-family house, then get to that ground point and go no further, then we want them here. We want them having already made a commitment to Southfield. They're willing to live in this area. So it's, it isn't for everybody. And yeah, you can say that the millennials do this, but that doesn't mean that 100% of them do that. Now, there's a sizable share of that group that doesn't do that.
No, and under 45 includes Gen X.
And, well, and...
That's why I thought perhaps you ought to...
Yeah, by the time you get to 45, you're into the next category, who is entirely a different group. And that's that, that 35 to 45 is kind of that family-building time. Even on the millennials, if you delve a little deeper into that, it isn't that they're never gonna do this. It's that they're delaying doing that. They're doing something else kind of in the interim.
Yeah, but when they delay it, they won't be 18 to 35 anymore. They'll be over 35.
Our threshold's 45.
Pardon me?
Our threshold's 45.
Yeah, but millennials is 18, millennials is 18 to 35. That's, at least that's what the Michigan Municipal League is coming up with. But that's why I say that bottom, that bottom's demographics ought to be, perhaps ought to be split so that it takes into consideration those that, the majority of them do not want to buy. Because I would hate to see too much housing built for someone that wants to buy, purchase a house for a long period of time and find out that's not what really, what people really want.
Well, and remember, we also have 600 apartments. The $2,000 rent is gonna drive a $96,000 income. And we've accommodated the other part of that on the apartment side.
And I realize that this is, this is a vision. This is not quite a plan. Nobody's ordered cement, nobody's ordered boards, nobody's ordered nails to start building this. So we're still in the visionary phase of this. But I think we all need to be on the same bus for the vision so that we can make sure that when we say, okay, let's go forward, we all kind of understand where we're going, even though it's still fuzzy at this point. So, and to, I think to address Mr. Fugazi's, one of his concerns anyhow, if I understand the experience and credentials of Tom Clark, he kind of knows what he's talking about. So it sounds like you've picked a pretty good person to help give you guidance on what's available and what's attractive around the country. And I just hope that we keep in contact with him so that when we start making the final decisions, we're on the lead end of what's attractive around the country instead of, they've been doing this for 10 years and it's almost, you know, gone beyond its usefulness. So, another comment that I have is the water feature and the amphitheater and stuff really is sort of, mostly is summer stuff. And we really need to make sure that we have something to attract people to this development in the wintertime. And whether it's an ice skating rink or, you know, can turn the water feature into a skating rink in the wintertime or you do something that people have snowball fights or I don't know. But it needs to be a year-round development. And, you know, don't know about that. Another comment that I, as you were making the presentation, the tunnels underneath, that's the structural foundation for the buildings. What is your, what is your experience in filling in tunnels? Do you, do you just pack dirt in there to fill up the holes? Or is there something else you do so that you don't weaken the structure of the buildings? Because, you know, I'd hate to have another Atlantis, you know?
Well, again, obviously, I think when you remove, when you get ready to remove the tunnels you're removing the buildings that are structurally sitting on top of those. You know, at that point, if you're retaining a building, you're retaining the tunnels underneath the building because of the structural connection. How you use those, that remains to be seen. Now, there is, our structural engineer did an outlay, you know, again, there is the feasibility to remove the structure on the top and then seal and waterproof the tunnel again. But that's added cost and you really do not want to go down that line unless you really have a use for those tunnels. So that's why it's kind of that flexibility is. But, you know, for a prime example, if you're retaining the Hudson's, you're retaining the tunnels underneath Hudson's. So then the real question becomes, does that become usable space? Does it become parking? Does it become, you know, storage? Does it become another use? Those are all, those things to be determined as you go down.
Okay, that's the example I was thinking of. Assuming you go through those different decision processes and you say, no, we don't have parking down there. No, we don't have storage down there. No, it's not a good place for a playground down there. So we need to get rid of the tunnel. Now, do you just bring sand in and fill it in or do you do something else?
Well, if you're removing the tunnel, again, according to our engineers, you just can't fill it and walk away. It doesn't meet any of the environmental standards. You would have to pull it out, all of that structure out of there, dispose of it. You could grind it all up, you could put it in the grinder and grind it all up into gravel and then backfill with that standpoint. But if the structure's being removed, then you need to remove the entire, you know, structure. That was the first thing we said, well, gee whiz, why can't we just fill it and leave it all city? Well, that doesn't meet any environmental standards.
Okay, what holds, don't think of.
Well, no, if the building's staying, the tunnel's...
Yeah, that's what I say. You're gonna save Hudson's building, but you don't want to use any of the tunnel underneath.
Well, I suppose that we get to when, even when that structure gets redeveloped or revitalized.
Suppose you could mow it and do nothing with it? I suppose if you wanted to fill it, I don't think you would need to do that. I think you could just seal it, leave it as space. Structurally, it's fine, we get open.
Okay, all right. The reason is, you know, each time we do something different, it costs more money. So if you have to take out the structure and rebuild another structure to hold it up, you know, that's more money.
A potential developer would do a cost-benefit, understand whether or not they can do that. They're gonna make a calculated decision on how they're gonna handle that. Yep, they're gonna handle it.
There's some difficult things being done with urethane products, that Fairlane Green, that PVC land is filled with, and buildings like Home Depot and Myers are floating on those buildings. So there's some very unique things, cost-benefit analysis are done and entire process.
Wasn't that what they did in New Orleans with the sarcom in those trailers?
Why aren't they bringing all the concrete on that site? Why aren't they bringing all that concrete on that site? Besides fill, they're bringing concrete.
There's some more work gonna be done, there's a few more pads, so. A few more pads that are going, so.
Here's a chunk of concrete.
Bringing in concrete, piles of concrete.
You mean on North Atlanta?
No, there's concrete too. There's concrete.
On North Atlanta, we bring it?
No, we're stockpiling soils and...
Well, I've seen the bulldozers, they're moving the soil, but there's concrete there.
We need to...
Is that...
I don't know where that's coming from.
I can just mention that as the fill material's coming up some of the construction sites, the contractor working out there with the EPW doing some separation. And so there is some small piles of dirt, rubble, debris that's mixed in with the soil material. Possibly from a number of the city projects.
Northland Drive is being worked on.
Correct. But other city projects too are being, we're using that as a site to bring fill material to. And as the contractor that's out there maintaining the pile comes across a piece of concrete or something, there's some small stockpile of concrete and then we're telling those contractors they gotta come all the way. Yeah, I looked at it this week, but, so it'll eventually probably go away or become part of the build.
Okay, any other questions, comments? I thank you.
Thank you.
Next thing we'll see is on the 23rd?
Yeah. We, I think we have one other item.
Oh, you have one other item?
Again, we had a proposal to, one of the things, Tom, to explore, oh...
16,000.
Yeah. To prepare RFQ to go out and look at our brokerage community. One of the things Tom Carter, you know, our development expert said is, it's the right time now to engage the broker community for two areas. One of them is it's integral to right now to start to discuss how you bring a project or the ground to market. And that's number one. Number two is to understand...
See you, Mr. Hershey.
To understand, we have gone out, we've done a market study, we've brought the best minds together. Now, what Tom is suggesting is we also need to engage the brokerage community to understand what they see. So one of the things we're doing with this RFQ is to ask every one of the brokers to submit not only their qualifications and kind of help us develop the brokerage strategy of the land, also to bring their overview of where the market is and their reaction to the marketability of what we are proposing. So it's kind of like, you know, belt and suspenders. You know, we got, we got a market study, the people that, whose boots on the ground who are the closest to this are the people that are out there day-to-day talking area businesses. That's the brokerage community. So what Tom is asked, would like to do is to prepare an RFQ to go out there and select a few to prepare proposals. And with them, they're gonna provide an overview of not only what they do, an overview of their reaction of the plan and how they would market it and what uses going forward. So we think that the timing's right now before we finalize everything. And then Tom would bring back those, go through all those proposals when they come in and certainly make a recommendation back to this board. Nobody would be hired without that recommendation coming back to this board. So this is simply to go out and prepare an RFQ and go out to the marketplace to say, okay, what's our strategy moving forward? He is a big believer in understanding that he's developed a number of it around the country that if we don't engage the brokerage community, they're the ones here, they're local, their feet's are on the ground. They are gonna be an integral part for the overall plan here. And so he likes to bring them in very early in the process. So that would be the request we're looking for. I think there was 16,500 in that request.
Right, it was 16,000.
Was it 16?
16,000 was mentioned at the meeting.
Yeah, I thought it was 16,000. Was that Michigan takes?
My question asked is, with $300,000 that we, we can, could we keep, we never see a balance sheet on that.
Well, we do in the committee report.
I never seen one. See the budget, our budget, but I'll see the, where OHM is on that. That's still sort of a city expense.
We can get that number for how much has been expended to date on the 300,000.
My question is the steering committee, why isn't the $16,000 come off the 300,000? See, I didn't, we don't see the contract for the 300,000, but that is four. I just see 300,000 and see things added to the 300,000. I'm just trying to get the numbers straight in my head.
Well, he just said that they don't deal with brokers.
Yeah, I understand that, but that's not in the contract.
Wouldn't come out of 300,000.
Yeah, that was not part of the original.
No, but I was saying, I didn't see the contract, so I don't know if it's in the contract.
But it was not part of the original RFQ that we submitted for a broker to come in and work in at this.
So I understand where you're coming from, I'm just trying to get...
I can get you the balance of how much has been...
We have a finance committee, we have Friday. We have Friday.
Yeah, I can take a few minutes just to follow up how much we paid OHM on this job so far.
Okay, so if you get a up-to-date...
I can tell them that Friday's finance committee.
Okay. But for the time being, we need a motion to approve a $16,000 cost to hire Tom Carter as the, to write an RFQ and to interview the, any brokers that want to be a part of this, so.
Well, you need a rule ten first.
Can you ask, let me ask a question.
Sure.
You do RFQ, what are you asking them to go after? I mean, the person who's trying to get in, what are they looking at? They're looking at this whole plan? Are they looking for developers to look at this plan and give you a price? Where, what are we asking for?
We are looking for each one of them to say, how would you market this property?
Is it just marketing?
No, it's marketing the property and giving a reaction to the viability of the uses and the values that would come with those various uses. And again, the belief is that we can estimate all we want, but these are the people that are on the street every day. So he is gonna ask a number of them to submit proposals to. Each one will say, this is how we would approach the marketing. This is what we believe is the right uses today and how it could potentially be phased out to market. And these are the value ranges we believe that it's worth. And we're doing that, again, to get a checks and balance on the market.
Okay.
I'm glad we, all the rest of the world...
No, no, first of all, we gotta have a...
Yes. And again, Mr. President, just for correction, again, what we're proposing, since we already have an annual contract, we would do as an extension of this contract. There'll be some assistance from OHM to Tom to do this. So we would continue to, I believe, have it under an OHM contract that we're using subconsultant Tom.
So you're proposing to expand the scope of your work for an additional $16,000?
To engage Tom to write an RFQ.
For the purpose of preparing an RFQ to secure...
Proposals from the development.
Okay.
Or from the brokerage community.
From the brokerage community. I say, do you down to 300,000? It's on top of 300,000?
Yeah. So we're gonna...
You don't even know what the balance of the 300,000 is.
Doesn't matter. I mean, the original RFQ did not take this piece into consideration. So if they only spend 200,000 of the 300,000 dollars doing this, we'll get $100,000 back. we'll get a hundred thousand dollars back. But we won't spend more than three hundred thousand based on the RFQ that we wrote in the first place. So, this is in addition to. So, now I have a, have a motion from Mr. Cruz to find an immediate need to act. I need a support. It's been moved by Mr. Cruz, supported by Ms. Morris, that we find an immediate need to act on this issue. Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is carried. Now, we need a motion to hire Mr. Carter to do all those things.
I'd like to make a motion that we amend OHM's agreement to hire Tom Carter to search brokerage, the brokerage community in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars.
Support.
Is it not to exceed, or is that a flat? So, we understand.
That was a flat.
That's a flat, okay.
Could we get to see the RFQ for?
He's a master holder, you're gonna write the RFQ?
I'd like to know what it comes, because we have a marketing, is that, is that different than the marketing for, that, that we have?
Again, what we're proposing is that Tom will, Tom will write the RFQ.
Use the terminology marketing, we have marketing.
Okay, Tom will write the RFQ.
Tom will write the RFQ working with the city.
Okay, we'd like to see a copy of that.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Okay.
And again, the end product will be the writing of this RFQ and then before it goes out to the full, the full work brokerage, we'll be glad to bring it back to the community and show it and get it covered.
If I could.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I, I want to clarify, 'cause I think what we're doing is expanding the scope of the contract to add this additional task. Further define that task, not to exceed sixteen thousand. So, I just wanted to understand this, yeah, we're not hiring Tom. We're not having a separate contract. We already have five tasks that they are billing against as a percent complete and Mr. Zorn has the latest, so he can show how much has been billed on these five tasks. This would be, this would be like a sixth task with a specific scope and a not-to-exceed amount. Is that clear? 'Cause that's the way I see it.
Yeah, we're fine.
Can you answer me a question? The three hundred thousand is marketing in that three hundred thousand?
That's correct.
What are we marketing? Like, if we had come up with a story, or you come up with, you know, CBS or whatever, what are we marketing? What are we trying to get? What are you trying to say?
The market was part of the brand and the public relations and the communication of.
And the branding.
The brand, yeah, the brand. The branding is part of, is marketing the site.
Under the umbrella of umbrella, we have branding.
For, for repurposed use.
What are you branding? What is the brand, I guess?
Well, that's part of the, the image, which was the heart, the heart of.
The Northland, the Northland being the image?
If I could, what we've said is that there is an emotional tie to the old Northland, but we want to move past the old Northland and repurpose it, respect the history, but create a new brand identity. And that's part of the heart of, the heart of the image, help me, heart of it all. Is part of the branding and marketing of a new, a new place. And then, what, what, what Tom is talking about is when this thing gets wrapped up, we're gonna go out for an RFQ. This is actually getting input, we, just like the design is based on some market reality and input from the development community, the actual packaging of seeking developers, whether it be five separate district developers or two that does, one does housing and one does retail, another one does office, that's where the brokerage helps us identify what's realistic. We have parameters that we're working with, two hundred thousand square feet of this, one hundred forty units of that, right?
Yes.
And so, this is, this specific task is part of the implementation of the plan, the vision that we've come up with. That's how I understand it.
So, when you say branding, you always say, when you talk about Northland, people say, oh, I used to remember Northland and what it was. The two thousand twenty brand of Northland is not the same. Two thousand sixteen brand is not the same. You can't go back to what it was.
We agree totally. That's part of this campaign.
Because you set yourself for failure. Northland has a bad name today.
You're absolutely right. And I've used the example before, my hometown in Syracuse, Oil City, was a bunch of oil tankers and that's where you dump cars and bodies. They repurposed it as Franklin Square and they started cleaning it up and they started having events. And they did a study and they said the Franklin stove was, was manufactured in the textiles on the Erie Canal, in this area. They rebranded it from Oil City, which had a negative connotation, to Franklin Square. And they started out with a public square and they put a statue of Ben Franklin and they started having events. And that led to, no one calls it Oil City anymore. But that was part of a rebranding and marketing of the event.
I understand rebranding, I just wonder, are we rebranding it?
It's an evolution. Part of it was shown here.
They haven't figured that out yet. It's coming.
No, but part of it's messaging that change is coming.
The change is coming.
And we begin to do that in a very slow and adaptive fashion. The end brand will be determined by if there's a master developer or maybe multiple developers working together.
But at some point in time, we're gonna have to name it sometime. And it's gonna be either Franklin Square West.
Yeah, it could incorporate Northland as part of the name or it might be completely different. And part of that, I think, will come out of the developer who's going to, you know, hopefully put all, most of his money into it.
That's yet to be.
Yet to be determined yet.
All right. We have a motion on the floor by Ms. Morris and supported by Mr. Brightwell to spend sixteen thousand dollars to extend the, expand the work of OHM to include the brokering of the.
RFQ for the brokering.
The RFQ for the brokering. And he's gonna be interviewed too, I think, yes. I don't want him to come back and ask for another eight or ten dollars. Now, I got all these things, what do you want me to do with them?
No, he will, he will, write the RFQ, be the interviews and make a recommendation.
And we will see a copy of that before us. Okay, thank you.
Are we being the committee or full council?
Pardon?
We being the committee or full council?
Actually, I think the committee is, is ample. Bring it to the Northland.
The review.
Northland, yes. You are right.
Okay.
All right. Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is carried.
I guess.
Don't do it. Thank you. We have two requests for recognition. One is by Mr. Gerard Mullin. If you'll go to the, to the left side.
Gerard Mullin, Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. To the chair, I'd like to ask this council a question. Why wasn't a public notice for today's added council meeting posted in accordance with this state's Open Meetings Act? That is, Public Act 267 of nineteen seventy-six. This sin of omission, that is, no public meeting notice translates into a secret meeting and thus a violation of the Open Meetings Act. And I quote from the applicable section, section five, subsection three of the act. If there's a change in the schedule of regular meetings of a public body, there shall be posted within three days after the meeting at which the change is made, a public notice stating the new dates, times, and places of its regular meetings, unquote. This added council meeting was scheduled at the Monday, July eighteen, twenty sixteen council meeting. This council had then three days until and including Thursday, July twenty-first, twenty sixteen, to post a public meeting notice, but this council failed to do so. You will note, no public notice, no Southfield cop here tonight to protect this meeting. No public notice, no public here tonight to attend this important Northland public meeting. Thank you.
The next person that asked for recognition is Ms. Pamela Gerald. You have three votes.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number's two four eight three four six zero four three nine. First of all, I want to thank OHM for giving a wonderful presentation that I think for residents is in line with the visioning session that the city had. So, thank you guys for that. Now, I want to talk about something that's very important to me. I understand that we have a new Parks and Recreation Director and I had an opportunity to meet her. I don't know much about her other than what she said, but I can't help but think how this city drug Doug Block for five years in a position that you guys thought that he wasn't qualified for. Now, if you really felt that he wasn't qualified, you used him for five years. What does that say about a city that would have someone as an acting director for five years that you didn't think was qualified? I think you guys duped and bamboozled him. You had him jumping through all kinds of hoops. And for Cassie, I do appreciate the fact that you said you wanted to do some kind of presentation to, to thank him for what he's done, but it's a bit late. And I love you for saying that. But I still go back to the fact that you had to go out and field this job when you already had someone in that position that was working over and above to be the acting director. Now, you sit there like you're high on the hog. Why didn't the city do a search for your position when Jim Charette passed away? You told the city that you were so great with getting grants. What grant have you brought into the city? Why didn't the city seek out Shelley's position? You took a one-woman department, made her a manager, and that wasn't good enough 'cause she's your wife's friend and you made her a director. How come you didn't search out Shelley's position? Now, if we were to go back and do a scenario or, or just an analysis on who's done what, I guarantee you Doug Block has done more for Parks and Recreation than Shelley did for community development. 'Cause a lot of these petitioners that came here, they had to see her because she was in that position. Name me one thing that she's responsible for bringing to this city. Name me one grant that you brought to the city, but you touted how good you were at writing grants. Tonight, I'm saying all of you should be ashamed of yourself and no offense to the new Parks and Recreation Director, I don't know you, I'm just talking about what was here before you came. And you guys dog dug out.
Thank you. So, we need to go into a closed session?
Can we amend the agenda for the closed session? We want to do the pending litigation and when we finish that, we want to do the project evaluation, which would be appropriate for a closed session.
We need to, we need a motion to, do a rule ten again?
Yeah, a rule call.
No.
Oh, a rule ten to do.
Two.
Yes, technically you do.
It's been, it's been moved by, it's been moved by Mr. Manalbaum, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we find an immediate need to act to add one agenda item to our closed session, which is property acquisition. Are we prepared to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is carried. Now, I need a motion to go into a closed session?
So, then make the motion to amend the.
Because you're taking formal action to go into closed session.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
A rule ten.
A rule ten? No, it's on our agenda.
Wait, no.
No, I understand, but you're.
A rule ten and then make a motion, another motion to amend the agenda, right?
We already amended the agenda. We just.
Well, that was a rule ten to take.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So.
I'm sorry, okay, yes, you're right.
Okay.
All right, we need a, we need a motion.
I'm going to make a motion, Chair, to add the discussion of.
One more.
Yeah.
It's been moved by Ms. Morris and ordered by Mr. Cruz to add the property acquisition to the session agenda. Now, I need a motion to go into.
No, wait.
All of them, all right. Guys. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.